I assume since it's so late, we have a quorum. Yes, I can see we did. I will call the December 3rd meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on November 30th, 2020, and by posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board of the main floor of Borough Hall, also on November 30th. I will remind everyone to not have a power outage and speak into your microphones. And we're going to get started. So Jen, roll call, please.
Ms. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Brescher?
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Kluger?
Here.
Mr. Lennaros? Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
Here.
Great, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, everybody, for showing up. I will mention that during this time of COVID-19 that the borough is using the telephone meeting format in an effort to mitigate the chance of exposure to COVID-19 as part of the borough's ongoing effort to slow the rate of transmission and avoid overwhelming our treatment centers. So when it is time for public comment, the public will be invited to participate, and we'll make a little announcement about how you will do that at that time. But I think our first order of business is we have a minor subdivision in both variants. The address would be 402 South 7th Avenue. I know our professionals have submitted reports deeming them complete, but Roger, I guess the board must also therefore deem them complete.
I would recommend that, yes, ma'am.
So we'll do that with, I guess, a roll call. We make a motion, and then it'll be a roll call, though?
Yes.
Okay, so I would make a motion, then, to deem the application of Lions Gate Homes LLC, 402 South 7th Avenue, complete by the recommendation of the planning board professionals. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Alan Williams. So Jen, let's do a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes. Okay, so I guess at this time, it's a little, I guess, well, Roger, maybe you want to ask our applicant to have their attorney introduce yourself, and then you can take over. Okay.
I think you've just done that. Mr. Clarkin, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself to the board and state your name and the location of your professional offices, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, professional staff, Attorney James Clarkin of the firm of Clarkin and Violo. For the applicant, my law offices are located at 86 Washington Avenue in Milltown, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkin. Why don't you proceed with either, if you choose, an opening statement, hopefully brief, and then whatever witnesses you think you intend to present?
Our opening statements are always brief, Mr. Thomas. This is an application to subdivide the subject property into two conforming lots. Currently, there is an older one-story dwelling on the property, and it is proposed to be demolished. In its place, the applicant proposes a single-family detached dwelling with an attached garage on each of the lots for a total of two residential units. The application requests four bulk variances for each lot. First is single and combined side yard setbacks, then your coverages building and impervious, and then a variance for minimum distance between buildings. We also are requesting an exception from your design standard so that we may have a forward-facing garage. We will shortly be providing testimony from our planner to justify those variances to you. We acknowledge receipt of two review memorandum. The first is from Jim Constantine's firm, LRK, and it was dated November 30 of this year. We also are in receipt of Bruce Koch's November 24 review letter. We will address the items in each of those two letters. We have two witnesses this evening. The first is Roger Winkle, who is our architect. He will take us through the elevations and floor plans. Next, we have Paul Fletcher, who is both an engineer as well as a planner. He prepared the engineering drawings, and he will testify as to the proposed improvement of the property. He will then further testify to justify the variances with planning testimony. Madam Chair, unless you or any of the board members or staff have any initial questions, I'll move to the first witness.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, we'll call Roger Winkle.
Hello.
Mr. Winkle, I think you need to unmute, possibly. Am I wrong?
Excuse me.
Hello? We can hear.
Oh, okay. Mr. Winkle, do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please, for the record?
Yes. Roger Charles Winkle, W-I-N-K-L-E, office at 947 Clark Avenue in Plainfield.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Winkle, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am. I've been licensed since 1981.
And have you appeared before various boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have appeared through 20 or 30 boards.
And have your credentials as an architect always been accepted by those boards?
Yes, they have.
Madam Chair, I would offer Mr. Winkle up as an expert in the field of architecture.
Sounds good, thank you.
Roger, did you prepare the elevations and floor plans for these two new halls?
Yes, I did. I don't know if the exhibits can be shared or shown. I don't know if anybody has copied them.
So we all have copies. I don't know, Jennifer or Emma, was there an intention for you all to be able to share those with everyone?
I don't think I really need to share them if everybody has a copy.
But the intention was to have the applicant share the screen.
Right. So, Mr. Winkle, are you able to share the documents via your own screen?
I will see if I can. Do you have, did a document come up?
If you click on it, it looks like it might come up. Maybe there's a delay.
You can bring your cursor up, Roger, to the first one.
Say that again?
You can bring your cursor up to the top item and click on it.
Anything?
Mr. Winkle, can you see the document on your screen?
I'm not the one to be suggesting anything in terms of technology, but maybe if Mr. Winkle could start all over and maybe, oh, wait a minute.
Oh, there we go. Maybe there's just a delay.
Just frozen.
You have one now?
Not yet.
It looks like there was a delay, and maybe we're going to get it.
Not yet.
Did you click on the cursor, Roger?
Click on the cursor. No.
Roger, do you have two screens open?
Let me try again.
Roger, if you have two screens, you may be sharing the wrong screen.
Yeah, when you press Share Screen, you should have an option of which app or screen you allow the public to see. So if you have the document already open, just select the document.
Okay, let's try that again. There was an option that I clicked, but nothing's coming up, huh? At the top, it says my screen sharing is paused. So I don't know. It went green and then stopped.
Emma, can anybody share their screen, or is it just?
Yes, anyone who's a panelist can share their screen. If the file is not overwhelmingly large, it can be sent to me, and I can try sharing it for mine. Want to do that?
So you want to what, look at the front elevation?
Well, I mean, I can basically talk about the floor plans and then the two front elevations.
I'm guessing that that's probably the best way to go. The, I would only say for the record that while we were having some technical difficulties, the plans were made available for inspection by the public 10 days in advance. So any member of the public who had an interest in seeing those plans didn't have the statutory opportunity to do so unless, I don't know if, Jen, if you could, do you happen to have the ability, Jen, to? Never mind, never mind.
Okay, so this is me.
Okay, thank you, Emma.
No, it's Kim. And so I've just called up a front elevation. I'm not sure if that's what you were trying to get to, but you can direct me to what you do want to share, and maybe I can just share them.
Okay, well, actually, the floor plans are similar in both houses. What's different are the two front elevations. So I can just briefly talk about the floor plans, and then we maybe could look at the two front elevations and the differences in those.
So you want to talk about the floor plan, okay. So do we have a floor plan now?
I'm not sure if we can turn it 90 degrees or not.
I don't think we need to worry about that. If we've got it on the screen, that's a start.
Okay, well, as I was saying, both floor plans are similar. The house itself is a total of 33 feet 4 inches wide. The main section of the house is 23 feet wide, and then the garage and mudroom area on the right side is 10 foot 4 wide. Both houses have a front porch. They have the garage that is set back 16 feet, which was a recommendation of perhaps future zoning. So you would walk through the porch into a living room, large living room space, through a hallway. The dining room would be on the left, stairs and a full bath on the right. And then to the rear is an open kitchen, dining room, and family room. To the right side, behind the diner in the kitchen is a mudroom, and then the single-car garage. The area of the first floor is 1,355 feet. If you go up the switchback stair to the second floor, you'll see that it's a four-bedroom design. At the top of the stair is a hallway. If you turn to the left, you go to a pair of bedrooms in the front of the house. In the middle on the left is a third bedroom, and in the rear is a master bedroom suite with a master bath and walk-in closet. There's also a common bath on the right side in the middle. The second floor plan is 1,259 feet. So the total for each house is 2,614 square feet. Now, if we could look at those elevations.
So this is, I don't know. You have to make the distinction as to which elevation this is for us.
Okay. This is the elevation for house number one. The front porch material is stone veneer. The siding will be vinyl siding. The roofs are hip roof design, standard shingles. The roof on this one is a hip, a single door, and the windows are placed together and a little more narrow than the windows on the second house. They sort of have a Mulian look of a cottage-type home. This house also has a window on the attic, a double window in the attic.
And is there a space up there, like a bedroom or some third-level space that that window is for?
No, there's no finished attic plan.
Okay, do you want me to move to the, try to find the other?
Yes.
Just before we do, Roger, what is the height of that structure to its peak?
The height, the overall height is 27 feet 10 inches.
Oh, geez, I lost the original. I don't know. Oh, here we go, sorry. Hold on, I got to go back to the link. Something went kafleui here. While I'm doing that, does anyone have any questions about the materials that have been described for use on the facade?
By the way, while we're looking, if you've driven by the area, I'm sure you've noticed that most of the homes in the area are ranch homes. They're quite small. There's a couple of bi-levels, and the housing stock is fairly old, but it's not, probably 50, 60 years old. So the two-story house is a little bit unusual for the site, but I think any new or renovated homes would be expanding to two stories.
I actually grew up on the street. The family that lived in that house were there for well over 40 years. They grew up with my mom. I saw these plans, and I thought that these two homes would be a great addition to the neighborhood, considering everything you just said, that a lot of the homes on this street are a bit older. A lot of them were built in 1959, and most likely, most people making renovations will likely be building up and not out. There've been a couple of homes that have been newly renovated, one actually directly across the street from this particular lot, and that house added more towards the back and a little bit on the second story. So I think what you've designed looks very much, fits very much in with what is already there and what will likely come in the future.
Okay, it says I'm screen sharing, but I have several screens open. Are you seeing the second elevation?
We are, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Kaledra.
Okay, here's the second elevation, and the things that are changed on this is there is, it's a similar roof, but there is no window in the attic space. The windows have changed, that they're separated now. The Mulian pattern is different, and the trim, we're adding additional trim above the windows. Similar thing on the first floor. But the porch roof has changed now. It's not a hip roof anymore. It's a shed roof with a little gable over the center. And the door is a door with side lights when the other house has a single door. Once again, the porch will have a cultured stone base, and the siding would be a vinyl siding and typical roof shingles. This house is also 27 feet 10 inches tall.
And does it have a similar total square footage?
Yes, yes, same plan, same square footage.
Anything else you'd like to add, Roger?
Not really, just that I think these two homes will definitely start the, aid an increase in some nicer homes in the area.
Madam Chair, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for your questions.
Okay. Is there anyone on the board that has a question for Mr. Winkle?
I have a question.
Yes, Patrick?
Since we're, I'm just trying to get an idea in my head what the two houses next, each house stands alone in the drawings, but in reality, we're going to have a very similar house, not too far apart. Would you say that if you look on this drawing, you see these two vertical lines with a series of numbers? Would you say the second house starts really where the nine-foot and the eight-foot marks are? I mean, it's really that close. I mean, there's only eight feet of separation, I think, between the two houses.
You're talking about the space between the houses?
Yeah, I'm talking about if you were to superimpose both houses, the second house would start, you know, where those, you know, on the vertical line to your left. I mean, that would be about it, maybe a little further out, but, I mean, the garage is 10 feet, so.
If it's.
The edge of the page.
It would be a little further than those numbers.
Probably at the edge of the page, then, about the width of the garage?
Correct.
Garage is 10 in the, all right, so about the width of the garage door. All right, just trying to get a feel for it. Thank you.
Alan, did you have a question?
I have a question, historical. The, why did you decide to have a, in a sense, front-facing garage in your design, given there's an ordinance that prohibits it?
These sites are so narrow, it's impossible to have anything but a front-facing garage. You need like 25 feet for a sidecar garage. And we certainly didn't want to put the garage in the back of the house. It just, we'd lose the real yard.
Okay.
But the garage is 16 feet back from the front of a house. And the porch is six feet. So it's a total of 22 feet back from the front porch line.
I have a question about, not the distance between the two proposed houses, but the distance between each of those houses in the existing properties. How much space or how, like, close to the property line?
So I'm just going to interrupt for one quick second on that question. Mr. Clarkin, are we going to also hear from another professional that would speak to?
That issue, yes.
To the setbacks and the houses, how they're situated on the property?
You'll hear that.
Okay, so, Kaledra, let's hold that question because it's an excellent one, and we do need to get to the bottom of it, but we'll wait till, perhaps, maybe, I guess, there's someone better suited to answer that.
Kim?
Yes, Steve?
Can I ask just a quick follow-up question relating to the garage placement? In the neighborhood that's there, I know that there are not many other houses that have front-facing garages, but are there, do most of the houses on that street have garages at all?
No, they don't. Well, I'll give you my, I would like to answer a question with my quick, one of my favorite things to do is to go and survey the area myself. And so I didn't count, and I know that in our reports, we have an actual count, but I would say if you drive up and down that street, which is a super-long street, there aren't cross streets kind of cutting it off, goes for what would be the equivalent of many blocks, is there are these cute little bungalow-style ranch houses, and they all have driveways, but the driveway leads to nothing. There's not a garage beyond it. So in other words, you have this cute little, like, one-story bungalow house with a driveway that runs up the side of it, and then the driveway just sort of ends, and then eventually you get to the backyard.
Just for the record, if the architect could confirm that, I just want to.
Yep.
Because I think, when we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It seems as though most of the houses do not have garages.
Okay, because Alan pointed out, you know, we have this ordinance, but I think the main concern of that was changing the character when garages were mostly in the back. But if it's not already like that, I see that a little differently.
So there are a couple of homes that were built in the late '70s that are the bi-level homes that the gentleman was talking about when he first started in his presentation. There's two in very close proximity to this house that do have front-facing garages, and they're attached. But those houses are not, there's only, there's a very small number of them. They're not the majority of what the homes look like in that area.
Okay, thank you.
And to piggyback on that, I would say that because there are, it's not an area where there are. it's not an area where there are freestanding garages either. Like, it would be natural to see a small garage attached to the side. There happens to not be the garage where these driveways end, and I think it's because the lots are tight and the style of house that was put there, and maybe the time in which they were built and the style in which they were built. But I don't think it's an anomaly to have this type of attached front-facing garage in this neighborhood. That being said, because we have different housing stock throughout town, and it's not some, you know, we have sort of this issue. I mean, obviously, we need to still approve that we're okay with this front-facing garage, but I would say it's not an anomaly to the neighborhood, even though there aren't many of them in that area. And these houses will probably seem for, and as Kalidra points out, maybe there'll be more updating, renovating coming, but that the scale of these houses will seem larger than these bungalow-style houses that are currently there. So I just was hoping that maybe the architect could speak quickly to the scale of this particular house and the necessity for, you know, you're sort of encroaching on some of those setbacks and bulk variance and coverage issues. So maybe you could just speak to us quickly about why, why that's necessary.
Okay. Well, as I had mentioned, the total square footage for the house is 2,600 square feet, which is, it's kind of on the small side of homes being built today, but I would imagine that the bungalows maybe are 1,500 square feet or 1,200 square feet. They, the bungalows, or most of the stock seems to be built about the same width as the home that we're proposing. They're short front to back, but they're longer facing the street. So I, scale-wise, I don't think that our proposed home is really going to look out of place. However, it's two stories, and most of those are one. But when you get a neighborhood growing and a mixture of homes, there will be more two-story homes. So I think the scale is really not out of place, and I think it will probably continue that newer homes or renovated homes will get more of a second floor in a larger scale. So I don't see this being out of place.
Okay, thank you.
Just to kind of correct the record, the, most of those bungalow-style homes are less than 1,000 square feet. They have a pretty small footprint. They're situated on pretty decent-sized lots for the size of the house. They all have pretty sizable front yards by Highland Park standards and ample backyards by Highland Park standards, but the homes themselves are about 1,000 square feet or less.
Okay, so do we, does anyone have any other questions at this time for the architect? Mr. Clarkin, are there other people that will speak to the engineering and some of the other issues that were raised? Okay.
Yes, we'd like to call Mr. Paul Fletcher.
There you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth. Hopefully, there's nothing but the truth to help you go.
Is Mr. Fletcher muted?
Sorry, I.
Okay, great, we can hear you now.
I heard the, what the chair said, and yes, I do swear.
Would you be kind enough to give us your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please?
Certainly. It's Paul J. Fletcher, F.L.E.T.C.H.E.R. Business address is 54 West Pond Road in Hoplawn, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fletcher, are you a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And for how long have you been in those fields?
Gosh, 30 years.
Have you testified before other planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey and particularly in Middlesex County?
Yes, I have.
Have your credentials in both disciplines always been accepted?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would offer him up as an expert in both fields, please.
We will accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, did you prepare the minor subdivision plan, which consists of three shoots?
Yes, I did.
Did you also prepare the steep slope analysis, the garage identification analysis, and the stormwater cowl?
Yes.
Have you visited the subject property and toured the neighborhood?
Yes.
Have you familiarized yourself with the borough's master plan and its zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Where's the property located?
It's 402 South Seventh Avenue, and it is designated as Block 47, Lots 7 through 10.
And what are the dimensions of the subject lot?
It is a perfect square. It's 100 feet by 100 feet.
What zone is the property in?
The RA zone.
What are the lot width and lot area requirements for that zone?
Required lot width is 50 feet. Required lot area is 5,000 square feet.
So would it be correct to say that the subject property is what we would commonly call a double lot?
Yes, it is.
What is located on the property today?
There's an older one-and-a-half-story frame building with a paver patio and a shed in the rear yard.
Does the existing dwelling have an attached garage?
No.
Is the existing dwelling compliant with the RA bulk requirements?
Not in its entirety. It does not have the required front yard setback of 20 feet. There is only 14.7 feet. And actually, the front porch encroaches even further into the front yard setback.
How would you describe the condition of the structure?
Older and deteriorating, with a rather small footprint of about 685 square feet.
Is the property, I'm sorry, is the structure proposed to be demolished?
Yes, as well as the shed and the paver patio.
All right, take the board through what the applicant is proposing for this site.
The applicant proposes after the demolition, well, he proposes a subdivision to create two conforming lots and the construction of a two-story, single-family home on each lot.
And what site improvements are proposed?
Building setbacks. We'll have variances requested for side and lot coverage and lot area, which I'll go through later. The, because of the setback of the garage, we're able to achieve three off-street parking spaces. And as Roger had mentioned, the attached garage is set back 16 feet from the porch. So the, it's set back 22 feet from the front of the porch. The applicant proposes to replace the sidewalks. Any damaged curb would be replaced as needed. We will be providing four trees, two street trees, and two flowering trees. There will be typical residential lighting over the doorways and the garage entrance. There's significant landscaping we propose around the foundations. There'll be screening, landscape screening around the AC units. There will be utility connections to the existing services in the street. With regard to lot coverage by building, we are requesting a variance of 34.4% versus the 30% that's allowed. With regard to impervious coverage, we're proposing 46.6% versus the allowable of 40%.
Front yard setback conforms, is that correct?
I beg your pardon?
Front yard and rear yard setbacks both conform?
Yes, they do.
And the building height, that conforms as well?
Yes, it does.
All right. Have you had an opportunity to review the CME report dated November 24?
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman, the first two items are informational. No response is necessary. Moving to item three, if I may, Paul. Will we revise the plan to confirm that the foundation of all structures to be raised will in fact be removed?
Yes.
With regard to item five, you've indicated we'll replace damaged curbing. Can you please address item six concerning the existing utility service?
Yes. The, the existing water and sanitary sewer connection, I am told by the builder, is in very good condition. I know the engineers' report requests that we replace it, take, remove it to the main. I would suggest perhaps a video inspection to show that it is in good condition to the satisfaction of the engineer, but I would leave that to the board's discretion.
Bruce, do you want to speak to that now or respond?
Yeah, I'll speak to it now. I will defer to the board on that, but I will explain to you, as I have explained to Mr. Fletcher earlier today, if I was to buy a brand-new house, I would anticipate that my utility services were not 60 years old. Therefore, looking out for whoever might purchase the home, I include that comment in my report. There's no way to TV inspect a water service. I will bet at that age that the lateral is clay pipe.
Compromised, yeah.
So that is the reason I put it in there. I would hate to see somebody two years after buying a brand-new home to have to go out and replace the utility service. I would feel guilty, so.
And just as a point of clarification, there's going to be two houses. There's one current utility service. So one of the houses would get the old one, and then one would be getting a new one anyway. Am I understanding that correctly? So you're saying, and it seems like, I mean, obviously, the one house is set to the right side of the property, and then there's the empty lot to the left, and that's where the second house would go. But it seems like it might behoove the building of the new house to have that line redone anyway to bring it into the proper place in the new, in that new structure. But in other words, there could be more benefit than just the fact that you're not getting a 60-year-old corroded sewer line.
It's believed to the board's discretion, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
Moving on.
We'll make a note of it, moving on.
Item seven. Paul, can the applicant comply concerning test pits and foundation drain collection systems?
Yes, he can.
And can we comply with item eight concerning the legal description? Moving on, Madam Chair. The applicant will confirm new lot numbers with the assessor. I can represent to you that we've obtained approvals from both Freehold Soil and the Middlesex County Planning Board. With respect to item 11, there are no easements. And with respect to item 12, taxes are current. And with respect to item 13, we will certainly replenish the best goal of need.
Okay. And just to connect the dots, there was an earlier CME report that talked about the street repairs and the drainage, and I'm assuming that those notes were added to the drawings and were sort of onto phase two. Is that true, Bruce?
Yes, if not, we'll include that. Mr. Clarkin, Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Clarkin, I may have not, I may have missed it, but did you address item four? I thought you went from three to five.
Item four, I should have indicated that, yes, we will certainly comply so that we don't mitigate, that we will mitigate any negative impacts to the adjacent or downstream property.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkin.
Paul, have you reviewed the report of the Shade Tree Commission?
Yes, I have.
Can the applicant comply with each of the recommendations therein?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to the planning portion of your testimony. You've previously indicated what the variances are, but can you indicate what the standards are and what is proposed?
With regards to single setback, single sideyard setback, 10 feet is required. Combined, 20 feet is required. The applicant proposes 8.33 for single setback. On one side of the house, 6.34, and the other, combined, 14.67 versus the 20 required. With regards to lot coverage, 30 feet, 30% is required. 34.4% is proposed for each property. With regards to total lot coverage of all impervious, required is 40%, proposed is 46.6%. And lastly, minimum distance between buildings, 14.67 is proposed where 20 feet is required.
We had a question before about the distance between the proposed homes and the structures on either side of the subject property. Can you tell the board what those distances will be?
Yes. The distance from the proposed house to the house on the right, this is facing the homes, is 19.44 feet. The distance from the house on the left to the house immediately to its left is 16.53 feet.
Right, thank you.
And can you also give just some testimony as to how consistent that is with other houses on that block?
I didn't analyze that, but I noted that the house on the lot to the left is only 8.2 off the property line. So I can imagine that there are other situations, although I didn't do an analysis.
Okay.
I thought perhaps Mr. Winkle had referenced in his testimony that what we were proposing seemed consistent with distances between other houses. Paul, can you justify these variances to the board, please?
Yes. Let me first start with the sideyard setback variances, single and combined. As the Borough Planning Report indicates, the master plan recommends sideyards setbacks that are less strict than those that the RA ordinance currently requires. Our plan conforms to the setbacks recommended in the master plan, but not in the ordinance. The other thing to keep in mind is that the foremost portion of each of the homes conformed to both the single and combined sideyard setbacks. It is only the step-back portion of each of the homes that require the sideyard setback variance relief. Finally, on this issue, I asked, did he keep in mind that on the northerly sideyards, it is only the first floor that does not conform? That is the case because the detached garage is only one story high.
All right, would you please turn your attention to the lot and impervious coverage variance?
Yes. What we're requesting are modest variances in scope. We're 4% over on our lot coverage and 6% over on impervious coverage. Once again, the master plan comes into play here. As your planner report notes on page six, the master plan recommendation is that coverage requirements can vary. Your planner also noted, and we agree, that lot and impervious coverage variances are often granted for smaller residential lots. With each of our lots being 50 by 100, we think we are in that category of being a smaller residential lot.
Our plan includes a front-facing garage for each of the proposed homes, correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right, and do we need relief for that?
Yes, it is what I would call a technical variance. I performed a garage identification analysis, and 13% of the houses on this block between Donaldson Street and Benner Street have front-facing garages. You're only permitted a front-facing garage if the total percentage is 50%.
All right, let's double back now and provide the proofs to justify. All right, let's double back now and provide the proofs to justify the variances, starting first with the single and combined side yard setback.
That, the applicant was encouraged to work with the staff, and we did concerning the building footprint and design. The goal was to have a less boxy appearance and an attached garage that is substantially step back. So we believe that these variances can be granted under the flexible C2 analysis. The benefits of the borough is the better zoning alternative of a superior building design in a step back garage. I do not see any detriment to granting these side yard setback variances. When considering that these lots are permitted to be only 50, 50 feet wide, we believe that our setbacks do not impair light, air, and open space. My opinion is that on balance, that the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment.
Now, is there another variance that is related to the side yard setback variances?
Yes, that is the the standard of a minimum distance between buildings.
Obviously, because we do not meet the side yard setbacks, we similarly do not meet the minimum distance between buildings. Is that correct?
That is correct. 20-foot separation is required, and our range is between 14.67 and 19 feet.
So would it be your opinion that this variance would be subsumed within the side yard setback back?
Yes.
All right, turning to the coverage variances, how do you meet the proofs for these?
Once again, under the flexible C2 analysis, part of our coverage is, is taken up by the garage. Having enclosed garage space is beneficial to the borough because it reduces the number of cars that are visible and also provides an indoor storage space. Further, it keeps cars off the street. The other benefit to the borough is to create a house size that is compatible with today's market demand and not inconsistent with the sizes of the structures already in the neighborhood. What is being proposed are modest home sizes with a total floor area of 2,600 square feet. It would be, my opinion, that these slight over coverages are not readily apparent to the naked eye. And let's look at the overall benefits of the project. We are replacing an older deteriorating home, which is substantially non-conforming to the front setback yard requirement and replacing with two aesthetically pleasing homes, which will have a positive aesthetic effect on the neighborhood and probably a positive impact to property values. To me, the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments once again.
How do we justify the design standard for the front-facing garage?
I think we prove this based on a hardship analysis. To have, to have a side entry garage on a 50-foot wide lot is just not possible.
Dub tailing Mr. Winkle's testimony?
Yes, absolutely. Modern home buyers in general demand that, an attached garage for both convenience and safety reasons.
All right, let's turn to the negative criteria. Taking all of the variances together, can these variances be granted without substantial detriment to the public good?
Well, the standard is whether there's any substantial detriment. But here I see minimal, if any detriment. The excess coverages are modest in scope and as are the side yard setback variances.
In your opinion, can the variances be granted without substantial impairment to this borough's zone plan and its zoning ordinance?
Yes, I think we have a unique situation here in the sense that this is a double lot. There aren't too many of these, to my knowledge, in this neighborhood. So I don't see any breakdown in the zone plan or any kind of potential domino effect.
All right, have you had an opportunity to review the LRK report dated November 30 of this year?
Yes.
And with respect to item 7.1, can you address that, please?
Can you read that point for me? I have the report in front of me.
This is the front yard setback question, and it inquires if the prevailing front yard setback pattern is greater than 20 feet, it is recommended that the proposed dwellings be moved back accordingly.
Yes, we will comply with that, and I'll provide that analysis to the planner.
Madam Chair, there's four other sections of Mr. Constantine's report that I'd like to address, beginning with item 7.4. With regard to the parking, we will revise the plans to show a conforming number of spaces. With regard to item 7.5, we would agree to wrap the sidewalk around the tree to attempt to best retain it. With regard to item 7.6, we will comply with that request. And with regard to item 7.7, we may be repeating ourselves, but we will provide the additional trees that are being requested. If Mr. Constantine has any other sections in his report that require further discussion, I'm sure at the appropriate time he will jump in. That concludes Mr. Fletcher's testimony. He's available for your questions.
Okay, do we want to start with Jim just commenting about that, that tree aspect or, and either confirming or sharing with the board what was just agreed upon?
I think that was with, I think the question was with regard to your, your comment 7.6, Jim.
There it is, yeah. So there is, we had reckon, we had recommended potentially two additional trees located in coordination with our office and approved by, with consultation from STACK.
That's 7.7, Jim. There's also a separate 7.6 recommendation.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, 7.6.
Okay.
That deficit, was that what you were referring to?
I'm sorry, my, my bad. 7.5 is, is the wraparound, 7.6.
Seven, yeah.
So 7.6 is tree removal and replacement?
Yep.
Yes, 7.6.
So are we in agreement about how that's going to be met?
The applicant indicated they would agree, they would agree to satisfy that, that comment. That's what I heard.
Okay, all right, and then and there's an outstanding, I'm sorry, what was the other 7.?
7.5, they are retaining one of the two existing trees, and we basically suggested that the sidewalk, when it's replaced, may need to wrap around the tree, push back a little bit, shift its alignment in order to preserve the roof structure to allow that tree to remain in better health. And they've agreed to do that if necessary.
All right, so does anyone else, I guess, from the board have any questions then for the planner? Okay, Alan? No, I'm sorry, it's a little hard to tell what's going on. Steve, did you, yes, okay.
Just a clarification, I just, I think I heard the answer, but, so as I understand it, that the predominant setback of houses on that street is, is 20 feet? And the applicant has agreed to push back to that?
Yeah, actually, I'd like clarification on that. Reading the documents, it appears that the average front setback is 15 feet and that your original drawing started at 20 foot. Are you saying that you're coming, bringing it forward?
Let me just, let me just.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Concern. So, so I, I think that there's a house to, to the right, looking at it from the street, which is set forward a significant amount compared to the other houses on the street. And we've had situations where people have put in structures that didn't line up with the rest of the houses in the street, and it looks awkward. And so what I'm trying to get at is wherever it is, it kind of matches up with the rest of the street as a whole, as opposed to the house to the right, which I think is sort of, you know, not.
An anomaly?
I don't know if I would call it anomaly, but it's not, it's not the same as most of the houses on that street. So do I understand then, Steve, that you're recommending that the current setback of 20 is, is more appropriate for the neighborhood scheme? If, if that is what the general characteristic of that street is, yeah?
And our comment in 7.1 was if the prevailing front yard setback pattern, to Steve's point, is greater than 20 feet, it's recommended that the dwellings be moved back accordingly.
Except I feel like we read testimony in some of these documents, and I'm hoping either Mr. Fletcher maybe has this information, that the average house on that street is not 20 foot back, but it is less than the 20 foot back. Do we have that answer? Do we know what the general setback is of the houses on that street, on that side of the street?
We did not do an analysis of that.
Madam Chair, as somebody, as somebody pointed out previously, it's an incredibly long block. And to take the prevailing setback through.
Well, I, I, I just want to, I, I think this might help you. In other words, if this, if the prevailing setback is 15 feet, but our code is 20 feet, and you're at 15 feet, well, that helps you because now you are at the prevailing setback. And it appears to me, in what I've looked at, that that is the case. I'm surprised, however, that Mr. Fletcher, you know, or that someone can't sort of speak to that aspect. That's a pretty basic thing that we tend to look for is uniformity. And we, and it's played out in different ways. But one of the main ways is that the houses on a given street sort of line up with each other. So I feel like that I'm surprised, Mr., I feel like that, that wasn't something that we were presented with, so.
And that's exactly.
And I'm surprised that we don't have that information.
What I would.
Reiterate it here.
What I'd like to say is I know that this board has a knowledge of local conditions, and this board does a tremendous job in terms of examining an application and the neighborhood. My suggestion to resolve the issue is if you would be comfortable with having Mr. Constantine determine within the immediate block, I'm suggesting, what's the prevailing setback? And we would conform with that recommendation.
That, that strikes, that strikes me as very, very reasonable and makes sense to me. I, I think Kaliefra had a question.
Um, to sort of piggyback on what Steve is saying, on it, the setback variance on this street, it, it is a little weird because there is a tremendous diversity of different types of architecture on this street. There's a mix of ranch-style homes, there's some bi-level, split-level homes, there's a number of apartment buildings. So it does go back and forth quite a bit depending on what was built when. And as Madam Chair pointed out earlier, this block is very, very long and has very little side streets. So it's just like, there's one side of South 7th Avenue is just a straight line, straight up and down. My concern, and I would like to be provided more information on this, is setting the precedent for the distance on the side yards between two houses. If it's required that there be 20 feet in between each building to build two houses then that are very close together and then also kind of close to the existing properties. The square footage of these houses varies from house to house. But for this particular lot, the one house on one side is about 700 square feet, and the one on the other is about 900 square feet. So these two houses will be considerably larger than their neighbors. The style in which they're designed looks a lot like larger versions of what's there and more modern versions of what's there. But they, they will tower over their neighbors. And we, in allowing the houses to be so close, will begin to set a precedent for people who purchase these older homes and want to update them to then build very, very, very close to their neighbors, which we may see a lot of in the future. I'm just like preemptively thinking that that might become an issue.
Could I ask a question as a follow-up to what, what you were saying about the side setback? If, if Jim, or the engineer, were to look at other houses on that street and look at the predominant spacing side to side, would that make you comfortable, in other words, that we're preserving the same general sense of where the, the house sits on the lot for the neighborhood, so that the neighborhood's not changing in, in a significant way?
Yeah, I just think in terms of like a quality of life, a lot of these houses have been here for over 50 years, and a lot of the residents have been in those homes for some, all of that time. So if, as demographics change and people age out of their homes and move on or sell their homes, and as people begin to want to upgrade and update a lot of these older homes, you may have problems with neighbors if people are suddenly building houses that are really close together or expanding an existing property, because not everybody has the amount of space to subdivide a lot. So if someone just has a single lot and they decide to build a humongous house that is right to the property line, and they use this as the precedent for how close the houses can be, I fear that that might have an impact on quality of life.
So I'll break in and just give a quick, I, I think the guidance that we've used in general has been that we look for that 10-foot side yard setback. And when a builder, a resident wants to do an improvement and encroach on that, that we still were looking for them to be that 20-foot off. In other words, you might be instead of 10 foot from your, your property line, eight foot. But that, it sort of was allowed on the good grace that your neighbor was actually 12 foot off the setback. So it maintained that, that 20-foot kind of mark. One of the reasons why I asked Mr. Fletcher whether he had done any sort of assessment of the other houses is, you know, in Highland Park, we do have really varied neighborhoods and varied housing stock on, on varied-sized lots. And I think there are many neighborhoods that have these smaller lots and smaller houses, and the houses actually are much closer together. I wouldn't be surprised if on that, that block, houses actually are maybe only 16 to 18 foot apart and not the full 20. It would be really nice in this moment to have that feedback and know how consistent this is. Because I, I wouldn't say that I, I don't, I don't look at the footprint of this house and, and see it as egregious or that it's like, you know, that you're sort of being a piggy and trying to take a lot of, you know, a, a, you know, it seems like still somewhat of a modest-sized home. So it would be nice then to also have that feedback to know that it was also in keeping with generally the spacing between other houses in that neighborhood.
Just a comment. Looking on the Google Maps satellite, I mean, you could see the street, think because of the, how taller these houses are, the, the the more, the 20, the more, the more of a setback, I think, will, will work. And then if other people, you know, again, develop their houses and go up, it, it just, if, if everyone develops their houses close to the street, then that would provide a lot of, you know, I think massing. So, you know, most of the other houses appear to be, it's hard to guesstimate, but just, you know, 15 to 20 feet. But because these will be substantially larger in volume, setting them back will have the, you know, have less of an impact than if they all were at the same, let's say, you know, line off the street. So, I mean, it'll, it'll just help along with the setback of the garage and the setback of the porch and the different, you know, the hip roof. You know, you know, keeping, let's say, 20 feet would not be such a bad idea, I think. That you definitely have the depth on the, on the, on the lot.
I think to address Kim's comment, I think Steve's suggestion might very well be reasonable. I don't know if Jim has, Jim Constantine has a comment, but, you know, it does, he does seem to suggest that there be a, if there is going to be an action to get a sense before any building permit is issued, to get an analysis done of what the prevailing distances between houses in the immediate neighborhood to determine whether or not, what, what is being proposed is in, in that character. So.
Maybe I can just provide a little perspective on, on the setback issues. Because I think one of the aspects of our office working with the applicant on this was to really try to use this application as a test case for the planning board's 2019 master plan, what this board adopted exactly one year ago, last December. So within that, we had gone through an an analysis of the existing residential zones and actually what's built and trying to rectify it with what the zoning calls for. We have so much of the town that's zoned RA, and there's so many diverse conditions. We found. and there's so many diverse conditions. We found out there's a high degree of non-conformity and different neighborhoods have different patterns. So neighborhoods on the north side are, are much larger and deeper setbacks, some aren't. So there were recommendations that we talked to, that the applicant has testified to, that I think in fairness, I just want to spend a couple of minutes going through with the planning board. One, in the appendix, this is your 2019 land use plan element, appendix, which is section seven, beginning on page ninety-one and page ninety-two, we talk about the potential recalibration of bulk standards. And for lots forty to fifty feet in width, going to a single side yard of six feet, a combined of eighteen, lots fifty to sixty, this is right on the cusp, going to a single.
Combined eighteen to a combined fourteen point six seven.
But let me, let me finish to come back to a single of eight, combined of eighteen. Then there's a recommendation, it's the first residential design standard, which by the way, residential design standards were recommended, some of you may recall, in the 2003. I know Alan does, 2003 master plan. So we are close and I, and I think Matt has some intention to try to get this moving in the coming year, if council agrees. This was initiated in part in response to what the quarterly chairs also asked for. We have a recommendation to have attached garages front-facing, one or two garages setback sixteen feet. The applicant's proposing that sixteen feet. In addition, they're proposing a six-foot porch. So it's important, as you recall, when you saw the plans, that, the whole garage massing is shifted back twenty-two feet from the front of the house. So what that means, when you actually look at the side yards of the main body of the house, and they testify that the width of this house is consistent with the front width of other homes in the neighborhood, that there's actually an additional ten feet, the garage width, the driveway spacing, that at least at the very front of the streetscape, where the homes are closest to the front property line and the curb line and the public realm, the homes are actually ten feet further separated because that driveway goes deep, deeper back to the recess garage, which has also got a provision in our adopted design standards, well, adopted within the, the master plan last year on page one hundred, where we have a provision, it's not called this, I call it the floating garage, which basically says on lots that are fifty feet wide or less, that the garage, if it's just a single-car garage, can extend up to five feet into the side yard. So. I do believe that there's greater spacing when you walk along or drive along or view this from the public realm than looking at the pure numbers of what the setbacks are. Because that garage is pushed back and everything that they are doing is following the directions of the recommended design standards, the form-based code that was in appendix to the master plan based on analysis in it. So I just thought the board should hear, hear about that from your planner.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I would just quickly reiterate that, that it is the full intention of the, the council to move ahead with those, those changes outlined in the master plan and the land use element. And that is something that's a priority for the, certainly the Economic Development Committee, but I think the council as a whole is my, my sense. So. And move forward with those aggressively. Granted, those are not there now, hence the need for these variances, but the goal of, of getting that done sooner rather than later is, is certainly where the council's intent is.
And, and I wanted to make one other comment about the character of the neighborhood, because there's a lot of very good comments, including people that have lived there who really understand it. But I've been through this neighborhood many times. And I think the, I think the, one of the most important things with any new infill is that we keep it to a single-car garage, that we try to slide that driveway up the side because that is the prevailing pattern that exists regardless of the house type, with the exception of one or two homes that have a garage that's right at the front face of the home. So I think that pattern at the, at the ground level is also important.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time for Mr. Fletcher or, okay, so do we have any other people that we're going to hear from, Mr. Clerken?
We, we are not. That concludes our direct case, Madam Chair. I'll reserve right for closing comments after we hear from the public.
Okay, so I guess Jennifer or Emma, you're going to have to help me know whether there are even people from the public here?
There are people from the public on the call and then there's one hand raised. Do you want me to call on them and?
Yeah, so let me just say to those here in the public, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing, I guess, star nine if you're on a phone and, or just raise your hand if you're on the Zoom. And Emma will announce your turn by calling out the name, which would be your screen name that she can read. And you need to begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. And Emma, you can take it from there. Thank you.
If I can, if I can, before Emma starts, yes, before Emma starts, again, just to remind the public that the witnesses that have been testifying were testifying under oath. That was testimony. And if you have questions and, and/or comments, which usually is a combination of both, you will need to be sworn in. Just, it is not intended to intimidate. It is just part of the procedure that is required by a hearing in this, of this type. So I just wanted to bring that up, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Roger.
All right, so the first person is going to be Elena Gerstmann.
Ms. Gerstmann, do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
And would you be kind enough to, oh, there you are, would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name and give us your address, please?
Yes, it's Elena Gerstmann. It's G E R S T M A N N. My primary residence is 127 North Sixth Avenue in town, but I own the house to the left of this property, 412 South Seventh, and I lived there for about seven years. I now rent it out.
Thank you.
So I have a few comments. I don't object to the, the, the building. I did know the people that used to live there. They were very nice. It was sad when the, the last man passed away. Few comments. One, one concern I have is especially with the garage, I hope it's, I don't know what they're going to price these properties out. It is one of the few affordable places in town in that very nice neighborhood where I lived. So I hope. So that's one fear I have. I just asked the, the, the board to consider. My house again is on the left side. It's a twenty-foot setback, I believe. I tried to call up my survey while, while I was listening to you. I believe it's twenty feet. There was a comment about eight feet between the new house and my house to the left. I believe that's house to house and not property line to property line. I believe that there's only about ten feet between the house, the new house that, the, the folks want to build and my property line. I am worried about the distance between the, those two new houses from each other and the new house from my house because, you know, noise carries and things like that. There's less privacy when there's that much noise. Also, I think that the garages, you know, very few, as was already stated, very few of those homes have garages. Even a couple doors down where they added a second floor about, I guess about ten years ago now, they didn't put a garage in. So it seems like the garage is coming with a lot of cost and that cost is going to be cost of privacy and the cost of the, the distance between all of those houses, including mine. And then I have one question, which is on the drawing. I'm pretty sure when I moved in, I'm not positive, that I needed permission from the folks who lived in that house in order to build the wooden fence because I think it's on that property. And the chain link fence needed, now needs repair. And I don't know if that's in. I did not see it in the paperwork, whether the new owners are going to repair or replace the chain link between 412 and their property. Those are all my comments. Thank you, Ms. Hannah Payman.
Great, thank you. So just before we move on to the next public speaker, maybe Mr. Clerken, you can have someone speak to the issue of the fencing. I think that's a good point. We often talk about if there's going to be changes, but, you know, of a fence line between property owners. And, and also if you could clarify, it looks like on the drawing, so do we still have, Ms. Gerstmann, if we do, I, I think you're saying that facing the property, your property is to the left of the, of the open lot right now? Is that true? I don't, I think maybe we lost her. Okay. So, because it looks like that's, if she's listening, that, that's eight, that's the eight point six six. So. Just shy of, of the ten foot on that side.
You're correct, Kim. That is the house.
That's the side that she's on. Okay. So could, so maybe, I don't know, who should, who would like to speak to the fencing?
I, I can represent to.
Okay.
That if the application is approved, we will accept as a voluntary condition that we will repair the chain link fence.
Mr. Mister Clerken, I also note on the front page of the map, there is, there is a chain link fence that does, appears not to be on your property line, but be that as it may, you've made the statement. But in the rear of the property, there's a wood stockade fence that appears to be on your property. Do you know the status of that? Is, is that in good repair or what's the story, if you know?
I'm checking with them. The, the answer is if it needs repair, we would accept that as a condition as well.
Okay, thank you.
So both the chain link and the wood stockade fences would be taken care of. Okay. Okay, Emma, do we have anyone else raising a hand out there?
Yes, we have Mary Boetian.
Mary, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Actually, I'm not here to give any testimony. I have a quick question. I apologize, guys. We had received a certified letter that the Cleveland Avenue School was going to be actually the discussion on the Zoom tonight. Is that still the plan? And if so, when? We have several neighbors on the line.
So that is on our agenda for this evening. The first, the, what you're hearing right now is our first item agenda and as soon as we, or agenda item, and as soon as we are through this, we will move on to the Cleveland Avenue application. It's a little hard to estimate exactly how much more time we'll need on this one.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks so much.
Okay. Emma, is there anybody else raising their hand?
Yes, we do have Elena Gerstmann again.
Great, bring her back.
Hi, back to the fence. Thank you for your comments. So the, the fence, I believe the wooden fences, I paid for that. And that was with that permission from the old tenants. So I would just ask that if, that, that is taken into consideration, if there's any, that there will be a fence between the two properties, if, I hope you guys don't take it.
So I don't know if you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't know if you heard this part. So the, the applicant is, has stated that they would make repairs to the chain link fence and that wood stockade fence if, if needed in order to maintain that, that fencing the way it was intended.
That means that they can't replay, they can't take down the wooden fence, Kim?
Correct.
Okay. Right. Okay. It will be maintained. That's right.
And then I don't know if anybody's going to comment on the affordability of the neighborhood and if that's gonna, if we're gonna, you know, do things to that neighborhood that we don't want done to that neighborhood.
Madam Chair, we have not established a price point for the home.
Okay, you know, again, that's not necessarily a planning board matter so per se. I, I would say that it's kind of one of those interesting things where if someone's going to do a project like this, it usually does behoove them to do a project that is enough in keeping with that neighborhood, that obviously it's a viable project for them and that. But I, but that's not necessarily a planning board matter per se.
The only thing, reason I would comment is because I think the garages make it much more upscale and could change the affordability while it changes the actual whole neighborhood.
I, I think the answer to the question, Ms. Gerstmann, is that the board really doesn't have any jurisdiction over pricing. So, you know, it's, it's really a question of, of the land use plan and what is being proposed and whether or not the standards for the variances that are being requested are met. Unfortunately, that's not, that does not include the, the, the cost of the house or anything of that nature. That's something that the land use board really has no jurisdiction.
I under, I understand.
But that, but that are, but that are, but that ordinance does talk about keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So I would say the fact that this isn't like, that they didn't take the slot and put one really giant house on it, that it's too smaller, you know, although they're bigger than the houses that are there, they are, I, I think it's reasonable to say smaller-scale houses that they, that in my estimation, they are taking the, the scale of the neighborhood and the style of the neighborhood into account in the planning of these homes.
Except for the garages. But again, I'm not going to stand in a way. I'm just trying to make it fair and just for everybody.
Right. This is Jeff. I have my hand up, just to, maybe just to respond, a question or respond to Elena. You know, this applicant, we have to deal with this application, this application. I mean, issues of affordability, we did look at directly when look, when updating our master plan last year. And there are specific recommendations and references to a diverse community of all incomes in the master plan. And we have recommendations that would probably implement some of that. So, I mean, I'd look at that because I think we did cover that last year. And then just a question maybe for Jim. And I don't, my ignorance, I don't remember the Affordable Housing Ordinance that we adopted last year. Does it, is there a contribution for residential development, Singaporean homes? Is there like a payment into a fund? Or are these, this development like this one exempt from that?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes. There, there, there's a requirement for a payment for any new housing. I, I'm sure that the borough has taken that into account. But if for some reason it hasn't, which I don't believe is the case, it's still going to be a requirement because it'll go to the state.
Right. So that, so that's a little bit of, some of the answers, we are going to be making, you know, the applicants are making a contribution into our municipal housing fund, portable housing fund.
Okay, Emma, do we have anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this application?
No.
No? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public portion of this application. And are there any further questions from the board that you'd like to ask of the applicant at this time?
I would just like to see a little more information regarding the side, the side setback and the, the variance between that. More specifically, from Eden Avenue to Donaldson Street, on that stretch of South Seventh Avenue. Because when you get from Eden Avenue to Benner Street, that's where you have the greatest mix of different styles of property. There's a mix of apartment buildings and different style homes. But from Eden Avenue to Graham and to Donaldson, you have a more consistent style of home that are very consistent in style, in shape, in lot size. Just to see the distance between those houses when deciding on what the distance between these two homes on this now subdivided lot and the houses, existing homes on either side. Just more information would be helpful.
So I guess that would mean that either the applicant has to take the time to compile that or we could determine that, that's not everybody's concern and, and try to move the application, I guess.
Or you have.
Roger, would you like to advise us?
Yeah, or you have the alternative, the third alternative that was highlighted by Steve Nolan a while ago. And that would be to, if, if there's an inclination to approve the application, that an additional condition would be required to assure, to the extent possible, that the distances between. that the distances between the houses is in the character of the area in the immediate neighborhood. Now, that, since I'm not
But and how, but, and then also talk to us about how we would, how that would
It would be, it would be, it would be played out by, by an analysis done by the applicant that would be then verified by either your engineer or your planner, whichever you chose to designate.
So then the next piece, so let's say it's determined that all of the houses truly have 22 feet between them, which would really indicate that, look, we are going to stick to that 20-foot. How does that play out then in terms of?
Then that condition would not be met, and they'd have to come back to the board. Yeah, I'm comfortable, speaking for myself, obviously, but I'm comfortable leaving it to the planner to make that assessment and within his judgment, and not just side setback, but also setback from the street. And if he feels that it fits the predominant nature of the, of the street or the neighborhood, the immediate area, I'm comfortable with that. But some other people might not be. I don't want to unduly slow down a project. I mean, I get that.
Right. Well, and I'm comfortable with that also, because I also have the suspicion that, that it is actually in keeping, and I wish we had that information now, that it is probably in keeping with the, with those setbacks. But I do feel like, since that's one of the lines that we hold in terms of character of the neighborhood, that we really, we should base the approval ultimately on some consistency there.
Madam Chair, I mean, the applicant would be agreeable to that approach.
Okay.
I would only ask that we delineate what portion of the street that we're going to look at to determine the consistency. To give Mr. Costin some direction.
So, I mean, my, my advice, and then Jim, you know, obviously you should chime in on this, but, I, I mean, I don't, it's, it's an unusual long block, but I would say if you're facing that house and you go two houses in each direction, so in other words, that's a double lot, but then you went to two lots, or, you know, in each direction from that house on the same side of the street, that that would give an indication of, you know, and if you wanted to go three, if that somehow helped to your cause, that would be fine. But that, you know, you don't need to sort of measure every house. We're just making sure that there's a consistency in what you're seeing in that section. My recollection is that that section is pretty, very much the same size house. You know, all those lots are 50, or 25, they're double lots, 25 by 100, so 50 by 100, and they all have about that same size house on it. So I think there's a lot of consistency if you just look a couple houses in either direction.
May I suggest, may I suggest that the possibility of, just to get a little bit more clarification, to have like an analysis of four houses on either side of the, of the two lots?
Okay.
Seems interesting.
And that Jim would then use that to make a determination about what is truly consistent. Okay, so when we go to make a motion, that will be sort of stipulated as part of the approval. Can, I don't really, I don't think there are any other outstanding things. It seems like any other comments that both our planner and the engineer made were accepted by the applicant. Is that consistent with your notes, Roger?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I, I think that what I was going to suggest is I can certainly go through all of the individual items that were agreed upon in each of the individual reports. However, in light of the hour and the fact that you have another application, I was going to simply suggest that based upon my notes, that the new conditions, if you will, is that the two fences that are on the left side, I don't remember off what direction that is, the chain link and the stockade fence will be maintained and repaired by the developer, by the applicant.
So it's, if you want clarification, I would say maybe it's to the Lot 42 side. In other words, that's the lot is 42 that it borders.
Thank you. And then addition, what we just discussed, that there be an analysis of the distance between existing houses and the character of the neighborhood, along with the character of the front yard. And that would, and that would be for a distance of approximately four houses on either side of the double lot. That are the new, if you will, conditions, and also the comments, the agreements that were made in regard to Mr. Koch's report as outlined. I have the sense that with regard to item number six, that Mr. Koch is recommending that the sewer service be replaced for each of the houses. So I'm going to assume that that's the case unless I hear otherwise. And then also that there will be a, an agreement to the items that were outlined in Jim's report, all the items that were outlined and discussed.
And then we're going to add in the, just make sure it's written in about the fencing also between that property owner of Lot 42.
Yeah, I indicated that.
Okay, sorry.
You probably want, go ahead, Alan. You probably want the water lines new also?
I mentioned that, that I thought the sense was from Bruce, that he was inclined to indicate that the utilities should be new utilities, under his, under his comment number six.
Yes, so are both.
So based on Roger's synopsis, do we have someone willing to make a motion that would capture what was just said?
Next motion to to capture everything.
Maybe the motion would be just to grant the subdivision, along with the variances, with the conditions that I've outlined. How's that? Is that your motion, Alan?
Yes.
And do we have a second for that motion?
I second.
Seconded by Kaledra. Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Rusher?
Yes.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and your professionals for coming out tonight. I think what I'm going to do is just give us all a three-minute break. It is now 9:14. So let's say at 9:17, we are all ready for our next application.
I'll probably be able to shut up in that time, Madam Chair.
Great, perfect. And I guess, Emma, you, are you letting anyone else in, or everybody's here?
I have to let somebody from the conference room into my office.
Perfect. Oh, I see.
Kim, I'm going to have to, at 9:30, I've got to put my kids to bed. So I'm going to, just so you know, I'm going to bounce off at 9:30. I'm not going to announce that I'm leaving, because I don't interrupt an applicant, but I'm just saying it here, so.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
Oh, can you get mine? Water is fine.
Is he helping?
No, he's using. I drank my
Well, it's a front door.
No. Turn the light on. Anything there?
Okay, well, it's 9:17. Where is everybody? Oh, there's Rebecca and Roger. Oh, look how good everybody is. Okay, is everybody, so Mr. Clark, and you are leading us again on our second application, is that right?
Mr. Clark. You're muted.
Not, oh, yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Roger.
So, let me just see who we got here. I guess everybody, I feel like we've missed, we've lost a few. We've lost Steve up there, Steve. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. We're good. Okay, so we will reconvene the, I don't know if we took an official break, but anyway, we're back. We have everybody, right? Okay, so our next order of business is preliminary and final site plan review for 43 Cleveland Avenue, which I guess we have been referring to as the girls' school. So, Mr. Clark, are you going to bring us through this as well?
I will.
Mr. Clark, and if I can
Oh, so actually, wait, I'm sorry, Roger. Right, I guess we have to go through the whole completeness thing before we get going.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Okay. So, based on the materials we received from both our planner and engineer, they have reviewed all pertinent materials and determined that this application should be deemed complete, but it's up to the board to actually deem it complete. So at this time, I will make a motion based on our professionals' recommendations to deem the application for 433 Cleveland Avenue complete. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Matt Hale. Do we, I, Roger, I ask this every time. Do we do a roll call? I guess we have to do a roll call, because the voice is so difficult on Zoom. Yeah, okay. So Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Rusher?
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy? Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, so let the record reflect that I believe Mr. Pearlman and Ms. Hadhazy have left the meeting, although I believe that Kaledra might be coming back, but Jeff said he was leaving.
Although his, his, his place is still there on the screen, but he
Yeah. They didn't indicate he was going to leave, but, so just so we are, we'll make note of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, and you are
Thank you very much. Once again, Madam Chair, board members here, I have James Clark in of Clark and in Violo for the applicant. I need a little bit of latitude on the length of my opening statement. It's going to be longer than usual. This property and the project has had quite a history over the past couple of years. As the chair pointed out, it's an application for preliminary and final major site plan in order to construct a religious girl, a school for girls on the property. Everyone knows it's 433 Cleveland Avenue, and it's part of the 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment area. The applicant is the redeveloper designated by the board. The Yeshiva School has had a presence in Highland Park for in excess of 31 years, dating back to 1989. Development of this property is governed by the 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment plan, a plan which you view as the planning board endorsed and which was adopted by the Borough Council. The proposed development of this site is the culmination of two years of design and planning by the applicant in conjunction with the Highland Park Council, the Highland Park Redevelopment Agency, and many officials and professional consultants of the borough. During that period, a goodly number of stakeholders have offered their input and insight into the process, resulting in the final form of the application and project which is being presented to you this evening. In order to develop the site, the applicant requires no deviations from the redevelopment plan, nor does it require any variances from your land development ordinance. The borough's planner identified three potential, key word here, potential deviations from the requirements of the redevelopment plan. However, I am happy to inform you that we can make some tweaks and modifications to our plan so that we will be totally conforming in every way. The application is a clean one and the jargon of land use professional. In furtherance of the redevelopment of this property, the applicant has entered into a redevelopment agreement with the borough. Under that agreement, the borough will receive an unprecedented level of off-site improvements. The applicant stands ready to comply with the various obligations it undertook under that agreement. Specifically, the applicant will be responsible for all the costs associated with the operation of the school, such as school crossing guards, refuse and recycling removal, and busing. The furnishing of busing by the applicant will effectuate a cost savings to the Board of Education of $80,000 at this point in time per year, and I'm sure that that sum will grow over time. Additionally, the applicant will provide the borough with a number of public benefits. The applicant has quelled $200,000 in infrastructure improvements and an additional $85,000 in improvements to the community center. The applicant recognizes that during the numerous meetings conducted by the council, the redevelopment agency, concerns were expressed concerning the condition of several intersections within the vicinity of the property. The applicant and the borough's professionals have reviewed these concerns, and numerous intersection improvements have been included among the off-site improvements. These are being provided by the applicant under the redevelopment agreement. Most specifically, the closest intersection, which is Cleveland Avenue and Madison Avenue, will undergo significant reconstruction. The nature and scope of these improvements will be detailed by our engineer during his testimony. While there are numerous benefits which will result from the development of the property, the applicant recognized the applicant recognizes that the construction may cause temporary inconveniences to the surrounding area. The applicant's development activities will comply with all requirements of the borough's construction code and other ordinances, including the permitted times construction may occur. Further, the applicant will work with borough officials to minimize the effect of the construction activities by coordinating the timing of site activities and providing traffic management. The applicant will also conduct periodic meetings with the borough in order to inform them of site activities as well as progress and to receive input concerning ways to mitigate the impacts during that construction process. As a permitted use, traffic generated by the proposed school is not typically taken into consideration. However, during the redevelopment process, the applicant and the borough examined and addressed any potential traffic issues. The applicant commissioned a traffic study, which was reviewed on behalf of the borough by the borough's own traffic consultant. The applicant agreed to the recommendations made by that consultant, all right? And the applicant's traffic study, the borough's traffic study, as well as responsive memoranda by the applicant's traffic engineer were all incorporated into the redevelopment plan and addressed by the redevelopment agreement. Finally, in light of the prior uses at the site and in anticipation of this development, the applicant commissioned a preliminary assessment report, which we commonly refer to as a phase one. As a result of the phase one, there were several areas of concern requiring further investigation. The application, the applicant then went forward and secured a site investigation report as well as a remedial action work plan. That plan determined that no further action was required with respect to site soils. However, due to the presence of groundwater contamination, which is a full forty feet below the surface, additional measures with respect to remediation will necessarily have to take place. These steps were identified in the work plan and by your board engineer, and the applicant will agree to comply with them. We acknowledge receipt of professional reports from your planning consultant, L R K, dated November thirty, two thousand twenty, as well as from your engineer, C M E Associates, dated December one, as well as a report from your environmental commission dated November thirty, and from your safe walking and cycling committee dated November thirteen. We will discuss these reports in our testimony. Applicant will be presenting three witnesses this evening. The first is Mr. Joseph Stern, who is a principal of the applicant, and he will describe the operation of the school, which he has been intimately familiar with since its founding thirty-one years ago. We will then call upon Stephen Carledge, who is our architect, and finally, Scott Turner, who is our civil engineer. I realize that was a mouthful, and I appreciate your attention in letting me go through that, and we can call the first witness if you are ready.
We are ready.
You're gonna call Mr. Joseph Stern.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I affirm.
Thank you. If you'd be kind enough, state your name, spell your last name, and the location of your offices, please.
A. Joseph Stern, president of Yeshiva Shalitio. Address. Nineteen Brookdale Court, Highland Park, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stern, if this application is approved, who will occupy the site? Yeshiva Shalitio Girls Division. What is the relationship between the applicant and the school? Four thirty-three Cleveland Avenue LLC is owned by A. Joseph Stern, who is as well the president and founder of Yeshiva Shalitio. Does the applicant currently operate a school? Yes, for the last thirty-one years. And where is that school located? Currently fifty-one Park Avenue in Piscataway. If this application is approved, will the operations of the school be moved to this site? Yes. How many girls are currently enrolled at the school? For the year two thousand twenty slash twenty-one, two hundred and twenty-eight girls. If the application is approved, do you anticipate that number will change? Yes, yearly, a gain of one to ten students. What would be the maximum number of students enrolled at the site? Maximum four hundred and fifty. If the application is approved, do you anticipate that that number will change? Probably not right away, but yes, over the next twenty years. How much has the girls enrollment increased over the last, say, ten years? Part of the redevelopment agreement was a chart that we produced that showed over the last ten years, thirty-four children. Okay, what would be the maximum number of teachers who would be at the site? About forty. How many administrators are currently employed at the school? Currently, two plus two office staff. If the school is relocated to this site, do you anticipate that number to change? Yes, for a total of six. Are there any other individuals currently employed at the site, and if so, in what capacities? Custodians help, custodian help at night, knowing that they use it for dance teachers. If the application is approved, will these individuals continue to be employed at the new site? Yes. If the school is relocated, will any new categories of employees be needed at the site? Yes, a part-time cafeteria, physical therapy, gym staff. If the application is approved, how many individuals in total will be employed at the new site? Approximately sixty, including business office staff.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Sixty, six oh?
Six oh, six zero. More importantly, what will be the maximum number of staff on site at any one time? Approximately thirty to thirty-five. And is that because we have shifts of teachers morning and afternoon? Yes, we have two, two studies. We have our Hebrew studies, and we have our secular study. The teachers leave, there are different teachers for the secular versus the religious. How many parking spaces are available under your plan? Fifty-five plus four bus spots. Are you comfortable that these fifty-five spaces will meet your needs from an operational perspective? Yes, we are. All right, tell the board, where do the students who are enrolled in the school, where do they reside? We have Edison in Highland Park as the predominant. We have girls coming from Parterret, from Eastland, from Annapkin, from North Plainfield, Princeton, and Springfield. How many reside in Highland Park? Approximately eighty girls for the twenty twenty-one school year. Now, how do the students currently come to the school in Piscataway? About ninety to ninety-five percent come by bus. Five to ten percent are carpool, there's no walking. All right, if we relocate the school to this site, how will the students come to school? Similar busing, about eighty percent, carpool, and individual parent drop off, about ten percent, and about ten percent would be biking and walking. These are all approximate numbers. All right, please describe the size of the buses that will be used to transport the girls to and from school. The typical fifty-four passenger school buses. What are the bus routes that will be utilized? So how do we, how do we design? We, we would need the exhibit if we can place that up.
Who, who is?
I can, I can share. I think.
Madam Chair, this is Scott Turner, the engineer for the applicant.
Oh, great, would you like to share? Perfect, why don't you share?
I can do that for you.
There we go.
I think I can share.
I can.
And while, and while Mr. Turner's doing that, Mr. Clark, and I assume all these exhibits were part of the application, and if not, you'll advise me so that we can mark them appropriately, correct?
That would be correct.
Thank you.
We did, we did submit it, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I thought you did, but I'm just saying, this one in the future, that's.
I know of no exhibits that are new that need to be marked.
Great, thanks.
It's on my desktop, and I'm not seeing a desktop. What I'm used to seeing is a desktop option to share.
Emma, is it?
There's probably like a green square, maybe at the bottom of your frame, that says share screen, and then it's gonna allow you to select what you want to.
Screen, whiteboard, iPhone, iPad, and Zoom Cloud meetings. I don't have an option for which is something I always have.
Yeah, I think I just shared it.
My apologies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you get that?
One of us is our bus route currently, there's a, we marked it as a red, a red route, a blue route, a green route, and a yellow route. Basically, the buses travel, and at this point, they will terminate at Cleveland at the school. It currently, for this current year, the school is four miles. What would that be? Normally, the bus route would go to Madison, make a left on Cleveland, go down till River Road, and make a right, and then travel four miles to the girls' school. At this point, with the new route, it would end, it would terminate right at the school. All right, moving along.
Mr. Clark, and while we're on the bus route, just for clarification, this bus route indicates the students moving through Highland Park. Mr. Stern indicated that students come from Annapkin, Princeton, Piscataway. Can you just talk about the bus route for those students as well?
There are no bus routes. They all come by, by teachers, parents, drop them off.
Thank you.
You're talking about one child from, four or five children from South Plainfield. You're talking about, you know, each one of the towns, just to be correct, we named all the towns that children are attending the school. All right, moving on. Joe, what are the current hours for the operation of the school? We start eight thirty-five in the morning, and younger classes get out at three thirty. The older classes get out at four thirty, except when it comes to Friday, which is usually earlier, when sun is down, when the Sabbath starts that much earlier. All right, will these times change if this application is approved? We've been operating this way for the last thirty years, no change. Okay. Does the school hold any special events during the school year during normal school hours? Yeah, there'll be a holiday play. As the holidays come close, the young kids perform for their parents one or two classes at a time. All right, and when are those events held? Generally during the school year, sometimes in the evening. Does the school hold any special events outside of normal school hours? Yes, an annual fundraiser, graduation, a special guest pizza comes to the neighborhood. And when are these events held? On Sundays or evenings. What might be the typical attendance at that kind of an event? A hundred to two hundred. Does the school participate in any interscholastic sports? None, none, none. And is there any indication that there'll be any in the future? We have no plans. Okay, what type of deliveries do you normally receive? We get milk, snacks, maintenance supplies, cleaning supplies by UPS, FedEx, no tractor trailer. How many deliveries do you usually get in a day? One or two. Will that change if the school is relocated to Highland Park? Not really. How will the school handle waste and recycling? We have our own garbage disposal firm that takes care of the garbage. So it's private service? Private service. All right, is there an outdoor play area proposed at the new site? Yes, we have a top lot, and then we have open area, fenced and open area. What will be the hours of operation of these outdoor play areas? Just four hours. Okay. Are you familiar with the four thirty-three redevelopment plan prepared by L R K dated February three of this year? Yes. Is your project consistent with the goals and objectives of that redevelopment plan? Yes. In particular, does your engineering plan address the issues of parking, circulation, streetscape improvements, shade trees and landscaping, pedestrian and bicycle network? Yes. The L R K report also states that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the borough's master plan. Do you agree with that statement? Yes. Finally, is the project going to be constructed in phases? It will be one phase of parcel A and B, and simultaneously, and then later date parcel C. Parcel C is a small lot which is slated for a single-family home? Correct, it's a fifty by a hundred lot. All right, but the church, the strike that, the school itself will go simultaneously on parcels A and B, correct? Correct. Madam Chair, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for questions.
Okay, does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Stern at this time? Okay, seeing none, I think we'll move on to your next professional and hold public comments till we've heard from all your professions.
Call Mr. Stephen Carledge.
Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your names, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please?
Yes, my name is Stephen Carledge, C A R L I D G E. I'm the principal of Shorepoint Architecture located at one oh eight South Main Street in Ocean Grove, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Steve, can you give the board the benefit of your education and experience and your credentials?
Sure, I've been practicing architecture in New Jersey as a licensed architect since nineteen eighty-three. I have also practiced across the country in nine different states. I, at one point, was a principal in a firm which had over six hundred and fifty architect and engineer employees. We actually specialized in school design at that time. Since nineteen, since two thousand one, the last nineteen years, I've been a principal at Shorepoint Architecture, which is a much smaller firm. I've been accepted as an expert by somewhere in excess of forty municipalities, primarily in eastern New Jersey, Monmouth County area. I've also been accepted as an architectural expert by the New Jersey State Supreme Court.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would offer her up as an expert in the field of architecture.
So, we will accept that.
Thank you. Steve, did your office prepare the elevations and floor plans which were submitted with this application?
We prepared the architectural drawings that were submitted as part of this application. And I will note, some of you can see on your screen, one of my associates, Brian Cozan, is with me. He need not be sworn in because he will not be providing testimony, but he will be handling the technology for me. And hopefully, this will all work very smoothly, and we'll get all the drawings when we need them.
Always bring the young guy.
That's, that's the deal.
Or the young gal, right, Roger?
That's exactly.
Steve, would you like to first go through the floor plans?
Sure, can we start maybe with the site plan, which we did not prepare? It'll just give me an opportunity to orient the building on the site and provide the board with some general orientation information.
Please do.
Brian, go back up one sheet, Brian. Okay, so you can see the, the site plan in front of you, the shaded areas, the building footprint. As you can see, the building is essentially an L shape, and you'll, you'll notice that the long leg of the L is parallel to Cleveland Avenue. And for the, for reference sake, I'm gonna call that the educational wing of the building or the classroom wing of the building. That's a two-story wing, and the other wing, which is wider, I'm gonna call the core of the building, and all the core functions are there. And as we walk through the floor plans, we will be looking at each of the spaces. The other thing that maybe, Brian, we should point out right now is that there are two primary entrances to the building, the first of which, if Brian can show, is located right in the center in the front elevation. No, the front entrance, Brian, there you go. Right. Almost, that's good, just use your cursor. Right there, and there's a secondary entrance which will be used for the preschool, the youngest of the children, which is located at the east end of the building, right here. And when we get into the floor plans, I'll explain, I'll explain how those entries work. Why don't we go now to the floor plans? The building is two stories with a partial basement under the south, southeast corner of the building. And as you can see on the first floor plan that'll come up, the basement plan, jumping ahead here. That's why I bring the young guys, the technology's never easy. We get to the basement, Brian? Maybe? Here we go. You're now looking at a basement plan, and again, this is not the entire building. This is a partial basement. It is only under the southeast corner of the building, and the entire basement is here for mechanical purposes and for some storage. It is accessed by two egress stairs and an elevator. If we can go up now to the first floor. This is the, the eastern half of the first floor, which is what I referred to earlier as the classroom wing. This is the long leg of the L. At the lower left-hand corner of the, of the drawing, you'll see the front entrance. There's actually a cut line. And we'll show you the rest of the building in a minute. And at the extreme right-hand side of the sheet, there is the secondary entrance for the youngest children. This will enable there to be adequate control. You can see immediately inside both entry doors, there are control stations to monitor who comes and goes and provide a level of security at the building. You'll also notice where Brian is showing you right now, that the main office of the school is located immediately adjacent to the front entrance. This, as I mentioned, provides control. At the other end of the building, there is a indoor play area, which is for the youngest of the children. And then the classrooms are allocated along the main corridor, starting with the youngest at the right, and moving down the corridor to the, the last two classrooms, all the way to the left, which is the, which are the first grade classrooms. There are two classrooms per grade, but everyone on the first floor will be first grade and younger. When we go up to, Brian, why don't you go to the show, we'll show the rest of the first floor. This now, looking at the southeast corner of the building, the predominant feature on the southeast corner of the building. And again, just to orient you, this is, this is to the left of the, of the plan you were just looking at, to the left of the main entrance. And the large room you see there is a large prayer room. As you know, this is a religious school and prayers are, make up a major part of the activities that the girls will be undergoing every day, so there is a large prayer room located here in the front of the building. Immediately behind it, you'll see a kitchen space. And the reason the kitchen is there, as you'll see on the next sheet, is it's immediately adjacent to the lunchroom, or what we commonly refer to as the cafeteria. And then behind the cafeteria is a gymnasium, which doubles as an auditorium, so that we can have both assembly functions and athletic activities inside in this one large space. And as I said earlier, these function, these, this portion of the building, we call the core. If we can now look at the second floor, Brian, and you can see in the key plan on the right where these plans are relative to the entire building. The second floor provides the upper grade classrooms, starting with the second grade on the left. There are two classrooms per grade, moving to the, all the way to the right where we have two eighth-grade classrooms, which are in the front of the building. The, obviously, you can see a secondary office area here on the second floor, which Brian can show you down to the lower left. And then the school library is located to the, to the rear in this core wing right here. That's the library or the media center. And then you can just barely see, you'll see it on the next plan, to the left, there is a science lab, which the older students will be utilizing, and you'll see that again as we switch to the next plan. There you can see the science lab where that connects, and then there is a multipurpose room located in the front of the building, which Brian will show you here, which is above the prayer room. And that's the entire building. The, obviously, the gymnasium is this two-story height volume. Brian, you can go to the next plan. Okay, we'll go to the elevations. The, the, the building, and, and I recognize these elevations are hard to, are hard to read because of the poche. Maybe we can switch to the rendering, and I think that'll give us a better opportunity to describe the character of the building. This is a rendering of the front elevation. The building will be, and, and I should tell you, just a few facts. The building is in total seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five square feet. At its highest point, it is thirty-six point eight feet, and the classroom wing, which is at the, at the, above the prayer room and the multipurpose room on the extreme left, the classroom wing of the building is thirty-one point two seven feet tall. You're looking at the building which will be clad in red brick veneer. There will be two different, very subtly different colors of red brick to give the building a little texture. And that will be all of it, the entire building will be set on a cast stone base, which you can see running around the perimeter of the building, has a base all the way around. The main feature you see there in the front is a standing seam metal roofed canopy, which is at the, at the drop-off zone. And that way, students will be able to leave the buses and cars and enter directly on, into the, under the canopy and find their way into the building with, on rainy days without having to get wet. The windows will be clad, pella clad windows. The roof will be a modified asphalt flat roof, although it won't be flat, it'll be a quarter inch per foot pitch. And again, what you see here is essentially reflective of what the entire building will look like. It's a brick veneer building, two stories in height, sitting on a, on a synthetic stone base or a cast stone base with a standing seam metal roof canopy extending across the front of the building, and then a, a slightly larger entry canopy which will contain pin-mounted lettering, which will be the name of the school.
Steve, will the building be prepped for radon?
The building will be, will be radon-vented, and all slabs on grade will be on vapor barriers. And yes, we will proactively put a radon venting system into the building.
And it'll be prepped for the passive vapor barrier if it turns out that's needed?
Yes, it will. And there will be an emergency generator on site, and that'll be located at the rear of the building, so it's not to cause any issues with the neighborhood. And that pretty much sums up the building.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for questioning.
Okay, is there anyone in the, on the board that has any questions for Mr. Carly at this time?
I have a question, just kind of a hybrid question for both the principal who spoke before and the architect. When we talked about the prayer room and the use of the school during the weekday and the occasional events on weekends and evenings, is there any intent to use the prayer room to have services on Saturdays?
I will let Mr. Stern address that.
Praying is a part of our religion, seven days, three times a day, and the answer is yes.
Are those, is that congregative service on Saturdays meant to be like a weekly service, as held at the other temples in town, or an occasional service limited to the school population?
All I can say is that we pray seven days a week.
I understand that, but the purpose of this application so far is to build a school, and we've heard testimony about the use of the school during the week. I would like to hear a little bit about the intended use on the weekends, given that there is such a large community space. I'm a little concerned about the increased traffic to that area on weekends when it wouldn't normally be expected.
There's no traffic at all, do not use vehicles on the weekend.
I'm not quite sure. But I think her question is more to a seven-day use versus a, a school is, let's say, typically a five-day use, so maybe a way to reframe the question would be.
I'm saying the seven-day use.
Okay.
So, so we, so we heard about the traffic patterns anticipated during the week. For the weekend use, do you have more details or information about the size of the population that would use it during the weekends?
I know, but can answer that more, more so than, than, not, nothing, nothing increased in any which way.
Well, let me, let me ask a question if I can, Mr. Stern. I think that the tenor, the, the tenor of the question is whether or not your services on the weekend, presumably on Saturday, is that going to be a service that's going to be limited to the student population? Or will you be soliciting or having parishioners to your school that would be coming in addition to the student population?
Hold on one second, please, Mr. Thomas. All right, we clarified where we're going with this. Go ahead.
At the current, at the current plan, there's no plans for a public synagogue to take place there.
Right, so that, that answers the current plan, so that when you open in a year from now, or whatever it takes to construct this, you will not have a, a public synagogue. Can you tell this board that that is going to be your continuing plan for the next thirty years? Or is it your intention to end up gradually turning this into a school with a public synagogue component to it in either the prayer room or in the gym?
Let me, let me answer that in this sense. If that is ever the intent, the applicant recognizes that it would have to return to this board.
And that's got to be stipulated by, very clearly, so that any service, Mr. Mr. Clarkin, that occurs on-site, whether it's during the weekdays or weekends, would only be for the student population.
Yeah.
Anything beyond that would be then, beyond the scope of any, any approvals that might be given in this matter.
That is correct. I want to clarify that, to the extent there may be a service on Saturday, it's concentrated with the girls and/or, you know, their immediate family.
And we're reserving the right, legal, we're reserving all legal rights to, to use this if religious services are permitted.
You would have to come back.
Yeah, the board, fine, yeah.
I want to clarify, I don't have any objection to your use of the building for religious purposes in any way. I'm concerned for the public that this application is advertised as a school, and I just want to have some clarification on non-school hour activities for the benefit of the people around the area. That's all.
Exactly, exactly right, Rebecca, and the idea is that it's, this is a land use issue, not a religious issue. Whether you have it or not is not the issue. It's a question of the impact of activities on the school. So the, the record needs to be clear in that regard. Thank you for bringing that up, Rebecca.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, I'm just going to continue on that vein for one moment. You, your proposal is for a very beautiful-looking building, and I'm just focusing on this, and, and maybe I didn't need to focus on the synagogue aspect first, on the idea that it would also, or could also serve as a venue for weddings or bat mitzvahs or other social events over time. And I recognize that there's a line between school plays and school events, which should be encouraged and are part of school and are to be expected, and more formal events that are maybe not anticipated at the moment, but the facility accommodates them. So I just wanted to put that on the table, that this application is for a school and not for a community event center more focused on what would traditionally be associated with synagogue or other community events based uses as opposed to a school-focused orientation.
And, and I would comment on that, and I'm sure that Mr. Clarkin would agree, that in light of the conversation that we just had, any of those type of events to turn it into a different type of facility, such as a wedding venue or, or other activities, would be the subject of a separate and distinct application. Those would not be permitted in this, in, on the assumption that this is approved as a school.
I would have to agree with that, Mr. Thomas, yes.
Thank you.
Can Mr. Stern provide any testimony as to whether their current school is used in this? In other words, what type, if you had to categorize three types of ways in which the school is used outside of a school, what would they be if, if they're happening at the current facility?
Fair, fair questions. Right now, at the location of Piscataway, are there any Saturday synagogue-type services?
Absolutely not.
Okay, are there any community event-type services that are open to people outside of the student population?
Yes, as I said, we get speaker.
Okay, but bat mitzvahs, bat mitzvahs?
Generally not.
Generally not, or absolutely not?
No, generally not.
Okay.
I have to say generally not because, you know, over the thirty years.
Well, well, I, I would say that your, your application does not include that, so any, any action that you would take, Mr. Stern, in that regard would be beyond any approval that you are seeking at this time. And I don't think the board is going to be inclined to amend the application after all the work that's been put in at this point. So I think you need to understand, and I'm saying it very clearly, that what you may have done in Piscataway is not something that you're going to be allowed to do in regard to outside activities in this location in Highland Park.
If I may, I just want to add, it, it's not the bar bat mitzvah ceremony in and of itself that we're referring to with its religious connotations and for what it is. We're talking about using the venue for larger parties and large community gatherings. It's, we're just saying bar bat mitzvah because it's a common type of such events. Like if someone wants to, wants to lane or something, of course, that's the purpose of this, of the area. But, you know, having a two-hundred-person bat mitzvah celebration might perhaps fall beyond what we were discussing first, Carl School.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for either the architect or Mr. Stern at this time? Okay, I guess Mr. Clarkin.
We'll move to Scott Turner.
Okay.
Thirty swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your names, spell your last name, and give us the location of your offices, please?
Sure, Scott Turner, T U R N E R. My office address is two sixty-one Cleveland Avenue in Highland Park.
Thank you, sir.
Do we, want to go through your credentials, Scott?
Sure, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I also hold a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Currently a principal engineer with Mental Engineering Associates. I have been licensed for approximately twenty years, and I provided professional engineering testimony to many planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, and including this board, although it's been a few years since I've been in front of this board prior.
Have your credentials changed in any way since you were last accepted by Highland Park?
No, they have not.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I would offer him up as an expert.
We certainly accept Mr. Turner, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Scott, this property is part of the 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment plan?
Yes, it is.
And it consists of three parcels?
Yes, it does.
Could you take the board and describe each parcel, please?
I, I will, and I'm going to try to share my screen again and see if I can get my desktop to show up.
You didn't bring the young gal.
No, I didn't, and I, I've never had this problem before, so I apologize, because that's where my files are located, which is very odd. I'm not sure why that is. Madam Chair, if I could ask you, if you have that handy?
Well, possibly, possibly, Brian, if, Brian, if you maybe.
I don't know if he has my. I don't know if he has my rendering or not.
I don't know. Do you, Brian?
So what are, what are you looking for?
The site plan.
The site plans, it's called site plan set?
Brian, do you have the engineer's drawings?
That's the full set of plans. I'm looking for the rendering. It'll say site plan.
I could, I could share.
I'm sorry, we missed that, Brian.
I have the site plan that I could share.
Okay.
Just give me a second to try this again.
Certainly.
I, I'm up, why don't we, oh, here we go, there we go.
Let me just zoom out.
Thank you, Brian, that's fine, and I apologize, I do have renderings that were presented and submitted, and I just cannot figure out how to get them to share on my screen, which is unusual for me, because I've been doing it before. So anyway, we'll start with the parcels, the 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment plan does consist of three separate parcels. Parcel A, which is the largest parcel where the school building sits, is block 154, lots 6.01, 10, and 11, and the block 191, lots 6.01 and 6.02, and it totals 3.83 acres. It has four hundred and thirty feet of frontage along, along the north side of Cleveland Avenue. For the purposes of the presentation, we'll assume north is straight up on this site plan. Cleve, the, the property is currently vacant, although it does have the remnants and remains of former industrial uses that were located on the property. There is a wooded area that's located on the, what I'll call the northwesterly portion of the property, more closer to the rail line than, than Cleveland Avenue for sure. The topography in the existing condition generally slopes towards Cleveland Avenue and Millbrook, Millbrook being located on the easterly boundary side of the property, which is the right-hand side of Parcel A. There's also a small, isolated wetland pocket located in the northeast corner of the property that has been verified through an NJDEP letter of interpretation, and there is no plan to disturb that wetlands with this application. Parcel B, which is located on the south side of Cleveland Avenue, and that is where the new parking lot is located, is block 153, lots 17, 18, and 19. It totals 0.34 acres with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage along Cleveland Avenue. It is currently vacant, although it does have the remnants of a former parking lot on that property currently. The topography slopes in an easterly direction, once again, towards Millbrook, which is on the right-hand side of the sheet. Parcel C is the smallest of the three parcels. It's block 153, lot 15. It totals 0.11 acres. It is located west of Parcel B. There's an existing single-family home that's located in between Parcel C and Parcel B.
Hang on, one second, Brian, could you just point out that for the record, where that parcel is?
And that would be block 153, lot 15, to the left of Parcel B, Brian.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The, the other, yep.
The other way, Brian, right there.
Nope, next one.
No, the next one, the next line, that's it.
That's it, that vacant parcel there, correct. That's Parcel C. That is not part of this application, however, but it is situated in this redevelopment area, so we thought it would be important to just notate it for, for everyone's reference, and it will be subject to a separate site plan application in the future for a single-family home. All of these parcels are, of course, subject to the zoning standards set forth in the 433 Cleveland Avenue redevelopment plan.
All right, you want to turn to surrounding land uses?
Sure, and again, the properties, I'm, I'm sure everyone is very familiar with where this is located. It is located at the end of Cleveland Avenue. It's approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet from Madison Avenue intersection to the southwest corner of Parcel A. Yes, Madison Avenue is where Brian is circling his mouse. The, the southwest corner of Parcel A is the, is the, the, the most left-hand corner of the property, closest to Madison Avenue. It is approximately three hundred and seventy feet away from Madison Avenue to the northwest corner of Parcel B, just again, to give you some point of reference in terms of where these parcels are located in relationship to Madison Avenue. Millbrook and a Highland Park Pumping Station are located to the east of the parcels. The Amtrak rail line, of course, borders the northerly boundary of Par, of Parcel A, and we have single-family and a, a professional office located on the south side of Cleveland Avenue in between Parcel B and Madison. And Park Physical Therapy is located in that, in that corridor. There is commercial and office, as well as some industrial uses on the north side of Cleveland Avenue as you head west. Immediately bounding us is the Garlotti Construction Company, which is directly across the street from the Madison Avenue intersection.
All right, Scott, take the board through the proposed site improvements, beginning with Parcel A.
Sure, so the site plan for Parcel A, which again is the school lot, we are seeking preliminary and final major site plan to construct a two-story private girl's school. The building itself contains a total area of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five square feet with a six thousand, three hundred and fourteen square foot basin, basement, and a footprint area of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet. The school itself is set back sixty-six feet from the Cleveland Avenue right away. We provided for a bus drop-off zone and an eleven-space parking lot located along Cleveland Avenue that's situated between Cleveland Avenue and the front of the school building. Access to that parking lot will be by way of two one-way driveways, which will function in a counterclockwise fashion. They are, the, the bus drop-off lane and the parking lot itself is separated with a center concrete island, five foot in width, to provide some protection from the cars that may be backing out of that angled parking lot if there are buses queued up in the, in the bus drop-off area. In addition, we have a twenty-eight space parking lot located on the east side of the building, which will have access off of a new cul-de-sac, which will be built at the end of Cleveland Avenue. Currently, the end of Cleveland Avenue just terminates with a, you know, simply with a dead end, the part of the, the, the asphalt just sort of dead ends in front of the Highland Park Pumping Station. Some of that existing asphalt will be removed, and then we will reconstruct with this new cul-de-sac at the end of Cleveland Avenue. The parking lot itself, again, contains twenty-eight parking spaces. It will terminate at the, at the most northwest corner of the building with a depressed curb, which will provide emergency access to the back of the property, as well as access for Amtrak personnel. There's currently a blanket easement on the property to permit access for rail personnel to get to the rail line to provide any maintenance. As, as pointed out by Mr. Stern, there is a fenced-in totlot area that's immediately adjacent to the, the northeast corner of the back of the building, and then there is a large playground beyond that, that will also be fenced in. The entire property is going to be secured with fencing. There'll be an eight-foot-high chain link fence along the sides of the property and the rear of the property, and, and when I say the sides of the property, it, it terminates approximately midpoint on either side as the, as you're heading towards Cleveland Avenue, and then it, it, it converts over to a, what will be a four-foot-high decorative metal fence along the remainder of the sides heading towards Cleveland Avenue, and then along the frontage of Cleveland Avenue between the parking lot and the sidewalk that will be constructed along Cleveland Avenue. The driveways will all be secured by way of gates, so between the fencing and the gates, the entire property will be, will be secured. Your site plans that you have in front of you have indicated that, that, that metal, that decorative metal fencing was going to be five feet high. We've agreed, based on the staff reports and, and the, the allowances in the redevelopment plan, to reduce that down to four feet in height in order to remove one of the exceptions that were noted in Mr. Constantine's planning report. We are providing concrete sidewalks, ADA ramps, pedestrian crosswalks along the frontage of Cleveland Avenue, as well as along the school building to provide safe pedestrian movements. We're also providing a bicycle rack that's suitable for twenty bicycles that is located off the southeast corner of the building, just to the left of the, the driveway that leads into that twenty-eight space parking lot. We are providing a refuse and recycling pad, which will be enclosed with a masonry enclosure. Again, this will be on the right-hand side of that driveway that's zoomed in currently on your screen, and that will be handled by the, by the school privately and addressed and picked up by a private hauling contractor. In terms of utilities, there were, because there were existing development on the property, there are utilities available to this property as well, gas, water, electric, cable, telephone. They're all located and available on Cleveland Avenue. They'll be brought into the, into the site with new services, and, and, and that will service the building. There'll also be all underground utility services as, as well. Stormwater management, of course, is a very important part of any site plan application and design. We've prepared and designed a conventional stormwater management system on the property. We've, through a series of inlets, underground piping, we intend on collecting all of the stormwater runoff from the building and these parking areas, and having them connect directly into an existing inlet that's located on Cleveland Avenue prior to it being discharged into the Millbrook, which is its current discharge point. We've also provided a rain garden feature that's located in between the, the, the two parking areas in the front grass area of the building, and we are, we, we understand and acknowledge that there are certain comments that were brought forth in the staff reports that we need to address in regards to stormwater management, and we will certainly do that. We'll work with, with your, your, your professionals, and we will, we will address and accommodate all of the stormwater comments that, that have been, you know, set forth in those reports.
All right.
Overall, I think, and I think it's important to point out, because of the existing conditions of the site historically, we did do an analysis of what the site held in terms of coverage over the years, and we are, in, in our opinion, we are reducing the overall impervious coverage on this parcel by approximately 0.38 acres, when you compare that to the prior development that has been on this property over a number of years.
All right, let's turn our attention to the site improvements proposed for Parcel B.
Sure, so again, it's same preliminary and final major site plan. We are looking to construct a sixteen-space paved parking lot, along with four bus parking spaces. The bus parking spaces are located on the most easterly side of that small parking lot. They are thirty-seven feet in length. Mr. Stern knows the dimensions of the buses, since he owns the buses, and we made sure that these parking spaces were designed to accommodate those buses. We will provide the wheel stops that were required in one of the staff reports as well to avoid any overhang issues. The parking lot will be curbed in compliance with current standards in the redevelopment plan. Access to the parking lot will be, again, by two one-way driveways. This will be a clockwise circulation, so you will come in the driveway along the cul-de-sac and exit the, the parking lot on the westerly side of the parking lot, so it'll be a clockwise fashion movement. We're providing concrete sidewalks and ADA ramps along the entire frontage, once again, and around the cul-de-sac to provide for safe pedestrian access to and from the school. Stormwater management for here is proposed to be handled by way of just a simple sheet flow off the parking lot heading towards the east in Millbrook by way of a flush curb at the bus parking spaces. And again, this, when we did the analysis for existing and proposed impervious coverage, we believe we are, we are decreasing the impervious coverage on this particular parcel by 0.05 acres.
All right, we've had some improvements that are related to both of the parcels A and B. Can you identify and address those, please?
Sure, so again, just in terms of the total parking for both parcels in question, we are, we're providing fifty-nine parking spaces. Four of those are bus spaces. We're providing lighting at both of these parcels, LED pole-mounted lighting, as well as wall-mounted fixtures on the school building. We've designed that to provide safe and adequate lighting. We have a 0.5-foot candle minimum, 2.3-foot candle average, provided within the parking areas and the access aisles. The, all of the lighting will be dark sky compliant as well, and placed on dimmers as requested by Mr. Constantine's office. The landscaping has been prepared after careful vetting over a number of months and over a year in terms of how we handle the landscaping here. We've worked with your professional staff very carefully in terms of the landscape program and, and how things are laid out here. So we are providing forty-two deciduous trees, seventy-five evergreens, and nine flowering trees. We have two hundred and thirty shrubs proposed, as well as four hundred and twenty ground covers. And again, the, the rain garden is a, is, in my opinion, not only a stormwater management feature, but a landscape feature as well, will be very attractive. We've provided evergreens to screen the Parcel B parking lot from the surrounding homes. We're providing street trees along Cleveland Avenue, as well as row of shrubbery in between the new sidewalk and the angled parking on Parcel A. So we tried to focus, and again, I apologize, because this is all on my rendering, but the, the landscaping here, I believe, is a very comprehensive landscaping package. We've significantly enhanced the area in these parcels with the, with the new landscaping proposed.
All right, how about signage?
So the only signage on this application will be for a facade sign. There's no freestanding sign. As Mr. Stern pointed out, there's no phasing involved with this application. Phase, parcels A and B are going to be built at the same time, along with the Cleveland Avenue improvements, and, you know, construction, of course, will be conducted in full compliance with local ordinances, coordination with borough officials, police department will be managed as needed by the responsible party in charge at the job site, whether that be an owner's rep or a construction management team, but that will be handled as necessary in any performance with borough standards.
Can you focus for a moment on the Madison Avenue, Cleveland Avenue intersection?
Sure, so there, there was quite a bit of time and discussion set forth at the Madison-Cleveland intersection, and the improvements set forth there, which are consistent with the redevelopment plan and the off-site improvements that are required for this application. Currently, there's an existing stop condition on Madison Avenue. Cleveland Avenue is a through street. The proposal here is to provide stop conditions at all three legs of the intersection. Madison will continue to be a stop, enter a, a stop movement, and will have stop bars and stop signs at, on either leg of Cleveland Avenue as well. So there'll be a three-way stop condition, as opposed to the one-way stop condition there now. on either leg of Cleveland Avenue as well. So there'll be a three-way stop condition as opposed to the one-way stop condition there now. Again, there'll be new crosswalks, new ADA ramps, new sidewalks, stop bars, et cetera, placed at this intersection. The stop signs are proposed to be installed with the solar powered flashing lights so that they are more visible and highly visible. So that we can try to stop and slow down motorists at this particular intersection. I will point out, however, that there is a requirement in the redevelopment plan to have the three-way stop condition be discussed with the board, of course, which is certainly why we're here doing this. And this is really a discretionary item at the board level in consultation with the Borough Police Department. If if this is the way the board would like to have this intersection handled. We're also going to address, there is a small drainage issue at the southeast corner of Madison and Cleveland. It appears at some point in time when the when the borough came in and did some repaving at the intersection, the paving left a little lower, flat area. And the some of the stormwater runoff doesn't quite reach the inlet that's at that intersection. And the the applicant is agreeing to address that issue at that southeast corner.
All right. Have you formed an opinion as a licensed engineer that your engineering plans are compliant with the applicable redevelopment plan for this property?
Yes, it is, in my opinion, that they are fully compliant. I did speak to the three exceptions that we are going to address with revised plans. Two of them have to deal with a couple of landscaping issues. And one of them has to deal with the tree replacement obligation. And we can address, we're very confident we can address and eliminate those exceptions. And we are fully compliant with my site plan.
What is the status of other governmental permits?
So we we have pending two applications currently. We have the Middlesex County Site Plan application pending and a Freehold Soil Conservation District pending. Any other permits that may be required as part of the application process, we will certainly apply for and provide the borough with permits as we get them in.
You are aware that we have four reports that we've received from borough professionals and from committees, correct?
Correct.
How does the applicant propose to address the issues in those reports?
So we'll we'll start with the the L R K staff report dated November 30th, 2020. I'd like to make this a little easier and a little shorter unless the board's pleasure is to go through it in a little more detail. But we've been through the staff report. And we agree to comply with all of the required items that have been listed in that report. There are a couple of recommended items in there that we would certainly review and agree to take under advisement. And if we can certainly accommodate them, we will. But the 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 required items under the redevelopment plan will certainly be addressed and, you know, we'll again continue to work with Mr. Constantine's office to make sure we have a compliant plan.
And how about the CME report?
So the CME report is dated December 1st, 2020. I have been through that report in detail as well. And once again, we will agree to comply with all of Mr. Koch's requirements and requests. We will be working with him and his staff as we customarily do. I have worked with Mr. Koch's office for many, many years. And these technical engineering comments always come up and we address them. And we make sure we come up with a plan that he's satisfied with. And if we don't, he won't sign the plan. So we have to do what he wants us to do, and we usually can do that and and address them.
How about the report from the Environmental Commission?
So the Environmental Commission report is dated November 30th, 2020. We, I believe, Mr. Clark, and you addressed item number one, which is in regards to the the preliminary assessment report and the 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 soil issues on site. Number two deals with the stormwater management plan. And again, we agree to take all of those comments under advisement. Any of those conditions in regards to stormwater management, we will certainly comply with under the redevelopment plan. And any of the other additional requests or recommendations, if we can address any of those or install or incorporate them in any way, shape or form, we will. We just have to be very mindful of the use of the property and that there will be children here. We don't like to have open areas with any stormwater or open water areas. So we try to keep them all contained underground as much as we possibly can. But we will certainly take those comments under advisement. We appreciate the comments and will address as many of them as we can. In regards to item number three in that report, removal of trees. Once again, we recognize that we are removing trees. However, we are going to comply with the with the tree removal aspects of the redevelopment plan and the borough ordinances. And we have take no issue with being able to address that and making sure we can plant enough trees on the property. If there's a way we can do a little regrading in the one corner to try to save a few more trees, we'll certainly look into that.
And finally, with regard to the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee Report dated November 13, 2020, we are willing to take those suggestions under advisement as well.
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Clark.
Madam Chair, that concludes his direct testimony. He's available for questions.
Okay, great. I'll just start by asking for a clarification. When you're saying we'll take it under advisement, I mean, there's some very specific items that are outlined in in the Safe Walking and Cycling and, you know, the planner's report, engineer's report. So I'll let the planner and the engineer verify that they're content with working with you on their elements. But do I understand in terms of, let's say, the Environmental Commission and the Safe Walking and Cycling that you are indeed incorporating their comments?
No, that would not be the case, Madam Chair. For example, with regard to the Environmental Commission Report, we have a situation where we're not sure how far we have to go with regard to remediation. But we are certainly committed to including a passive vapor barrier and depressurization system if our LSRP indicates that that is something that we have to do in order to get a clean bill of health. With regard to this Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, we're not committing ourselves to do this. These are helpful suggestions that will be considered. But we are not agreeing to make them a condition of a hopeful approval.
Okay, and so then maybe we should ask, actually, can we so one point, the the screen that's being shared right now is more like a survey, and it seems like some of the testimony that the drawing that you were referring to, Mr. Turner, was I'm looking for a title on the drawing, but it's basically a colored rendering that shows the trees. Is that true? And some of the and the rain garden?
Sure, there is a plan, and it's part of the site plan packet. And I'm not sure what Brian has there available to him.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the entire civil back.
So we do, yeah, so I'm just gonna say, maybe we should, if we could unshare your screen just for the moment. I can reshare the the colored rendering if we need to. But I was hoping maybe that Jim, you could just address the pieces that overlapped with your your planners comments. And then Bruce, you can do the same and just make sure that we're hitting the the points that might still be in contention. For example, the you know, the tree schedule, in other words, how that's going to be handled and whether you're satisfied with. I guess some of this needs to be worked out after. But the but the fact that there's either that there's a tree deficit, whether the trees are not the right size, the right height, or too few, and then and how that's going to be handled. Jim?
Matt, I'm Madam Chair, I'll just, in terms of the tree replacement and the caliper of trees and the locations of trees, those are items that we certainly would all agree to because I believe they're part of the redevelopment plan. A couple of the items in in Mr. Constantine's letter that and there's not many. There's just a couple of these that are more recommendations than are than are requirements. For instance, item 7.5. There is a statement in there that it is also recommended that a structural canopy or roof be considered to protect the bikes from the elements. We are not in a position to install a canopy or a roof over those those bikes. We don't believe it's required. The applicant, Mr. Stern, doesn't feel that there there's going to be much of a frankly, of a use of the of the bike rack itself. It may be at some point in time, but you know, he's not in a position at this point, given all the other improvements that he's committed to to install a structure over top that the bike rack.
Right. So I guess my question is, are we, are you so in other words, you're saying, well, we're not going to conform with this, but obviously we are going with the trees. I'm just saying, Jim, are you you know, okay, moving forward with with working out those points or those anything, you know, further conversation we need to have at this time?
I'm comfortable working out, resolving the points and
And I just have one question, actually, that I wanted to ask you, Jim. In your report, and you probably maybe then described this, but it was not clear to me. You say that 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 their plan substantially conforms with the redevelopment plan. And I think there were maybe, I think you indicate that there were two elements that don't actually conform. Can you just tell us what those are? Or what you meant by that?
They 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 indicated earlier that they had addressed those waivers that we had cited.
So what you, so the testimony is that they're complete compliance with the redevelopment plan, and you would agree with that?
Yes.
Madam Chair, at the time that the report was issued by Jim, we had not had the opportunity to tweak the plan and be fully compliant, but we are committed to being fully compliant. And we've made that pledge to Mr. Constantine.
Okay.
Yeah. And and I guess just one other piece of background, the, we didn't just review this plan now. This plan went through extensive review really over the past, more than the past year. But in in particular during this year, so over multiple months. And a lot of the issues that we had provided comments on months and months and months ago have been incorporated into the plan and into the redevelopment plan as baseline requirements. So that's just little insight into the process.
Okay, so Bruce, I guess I'll ask just the same of you, just for the record, in terms of their general agreement to the points that you've outlined in your memo. Is there anything that you need to bring to the board's attention that you know, might be more difficult to
The reporting of the report is easily addressed, and I think Mr. Turner will agree with that. Mr. Turner and I had a conversation regarding the stormwater management system. And I believe that if there's any contention, it lies there. But I, if you are comfortable with it, I'm very comfortable with it. It's really a matter of interpretation of law. And if we need input from the board attorney or from and with the applicant's attorney to sort this out, we will. But, you know, our position is that they have to comply with the DEP and Borough regs and and they're approaching it from a different standpoint. So all we really need to do is is vet that out first. And then depending upon the outcome of that, they either comply with all of these conditions or they prove to us that our position is wrong.
And where does that get vetted?
Pardon me?
So Roger, where, where's Roger?
I'm here.
Oh, you're out of
I don't know at this point in time. I'd have to talk to Bruce in terms of what the what specifically the issues that he's referring to and then you know, discuss that with Bruce and also with Mr. Clark. And so it would it would be a couple of things. If it turns out that, you know, these are things that we can't, that the applicant and the and the board professionals can't resolve, and you end up indicating that, in fact, you are, let's assume that you're going to end up having a motion to approve subject to the conditions as outlined in Mr. Koch's report. And they can't be resolved, then we have, then the applicant has to come back to try to modify that that approval because the approval includes something that they can't meet.
Okay. It just seems like usually we are in the situation where there are these outstanding items and the applicant's like, oh, yes, we want to agree to them. And it's just a matter of you know, knowing what they need to conform to and agreeing on those things. But this sounds like we're already at some sort of standoff about what the standard is. So
Madam Chair, I think I can make this a little easier. We 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 agree with Mr. Koch's position that it is a major development. We have to comply with the DEP standards as well as the borough standards. Our office will work with Mr. Koch's office in regards to how we get to the point of meeting those standards. But we certainly aren't challenging Mr. Koch's office in terms of the standards we have to meet. We're confident we can meet them. We've worked with Mr. Koch's office in the past many, many times. And we will address his comments. And we're not trying to say we're not going to meet the standards. We have to meet those standards.
And
I've got it, Bruce.
Yes, Bruce?
Madam Chair, and I am perfectly comfortable with all of that as long as the board is. I have no reservations about being able to sort this out with Mr. Turner and his staff. And you know, we've done this many times before. And as Mr. Thomas indicated, if we come to a standoff, which I don't think we will, it will come back to the board. And you may recall on prior applications where that happened, I have brought it back to the board for clarification by the board. But I don't, based on what Mr. Turner has just told us, I don't see any reason why we can't resolve this. We've done things like this before. So I am very comfortable with it. It doesn't bother me at all.
Okay.
I'm up to the board, but I'm
There's there's also a whole category of other comments in Bruce's report that are easy to handle. For example, requests to add notes to the plan. Those we certainly are in agreement with. There was another one asking for Title 39 jurisdiction. We can agree to that. So that there are a whole category that are very easy to do, and we will.
And Mr. Clark, while you're speaking, Madam Chair, if I may, item four about the ground mounted generator or ground mounted electric transformer, do you have any or Mr. Turner have any input on that at this point? Can we just, you know, find out? I think you probably will need a ground mounted electric transformer. I just don't, you're planning a generator.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Koch. We will need a transformer pit. I am certain of that. We will locate that on the site plan at some, you know, wherever we believe that's going to go after some consultation with the with the electric company. I believe there was testimony in regards to a generator by the architect, and that will be located behind the building to mitigate any potential noise issues with the residents around this property.
Really, my only concern is that the residents don't hear that drone on those times you must operate. Okay? But thank you.
Madam Chair, the the other, the, you know, you can, the board is, it's obviously up to the board in terms of how they want to handle this. Excuse me, but, you know, there has been the discussion, you can either take an action tonight if that's what you're, well, first of all, you have to have the public and that's, you know, the public's going to be heard. And I, Alan, I see your, but let me just finish. You you have the ability to potentially take an action. There have been some suggestions that that the fundamental issues that are in both Bruce's report and in Jim's report can be worked out. There are some, there's some more vague responses. I don't mean to be pejorative, but that's the best term I can use at this hour of the night with regard to some of the quote recommendations. You can either defer that to the consultants, your consultants to try to work those out, or you can end up deferring any action until such time as you have an understanding of which recommendations are going to be met and which recommendations are not. Then, of course, you have the other reports that are advisory, which are Alan's report for, and I don't mean Alan specifically, but the Environmental Commission's report as well as the the sidewalk report, you know, those they've indicated that they will attempt to comply with certain things and others they will not. They've been fairly candid about that. You can either rely upon that in conjunction with your You can either rely upon that in conjunction with your consultants or wait a month and find out what the consultants and what those issues are going to be, which which ones they're going to comply with, which ones they're not. So that's your choice. Now, of course, that frankly is, I'm jumping the gun here because we haven't even heard from the public.
Alan, did you have a question or comment? You're muted.
You're muted.
Alan, you have to unmute yourself.
Which Alan were you referring to?
Not you.
I think.
I haven't spoken all night.
That's true.
You have now. A question for Mr. Turner. The architect mentioned there was going to be a system to handle radon, which presumably is an active system. Is that correct?
I, I, I will let Mr. Clarkin or the architect answer that. I don't want to misspeak on that issue.
We're prepared to properly vent the subsoil of the building via with an active ventilation system.
Okay. The, okay, the L S R P also indicated they should, they should have a passive system to remove vapors that may be in the soil from past uses.
Yeah, well, it, the fact it will be active means that the passive system can have a fan on it that can draw air through it.
Right.
Just the fact that the piping will be under the slab will enable those vapors to escape.
Okay. So essentially, the L S R P said thou shall have a passive system, which you can make active if it's appropriate.
Correct.
It, but if you're doing, if you're doing radon and it's an active system, you're there.
I agree with you.
Okay.
They'll do vapor testing prior to a C O to determine if they need to activate it.
Would that be done on a periodic basis typically for once?
I couldn't answer that. I'm not an expert.
There's more to Bruce.
What was the question?
If they test it initially prior to getting a certificate of occupancy, is that something they would do periodically, every five years or something?
I'm not sure what the codes are for that. An L S R P can indicate that to us. And I will make a note of that, Alan, when that time comes to keep that in mind. I seem to recall with a couple of the other developments that there was a plan for that, where I think it was every five years or so they tested it, something like that.
And and out of abundance of caution, Honeywell decided that they will be active.
And I think, and I think given this is a school, there's a probability that that will happen here as well. But I don't want to put words in their mouth, okay?
Okay. The second comment was my, my reading of the development plan, the developer's agreement is that there was going to be a whole lot more green infrastructure to handle the water. If you're happy, you can work out a deal with with Mr. Turner that will handle all the appropriate regulations unhappy.
That is my intent is to have them comply with the D E P regs, which is what the Borough Ordinance also mimics. And and he's agreed to that. So it's just a matter of us putting that in place. He did mention earlier about his detention. He preferred to see underground instead of above ground for safety reasons. And I would be fine with that as long as it meets the reduction requirements and such.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Any other questions? So I'll just jump in. I have two quick, well, I think they're quick questions. I'm just sort of curious. You indicated that that there was a fence around the entire property and that the fence also, I know there was a change to the fence to conform to, I guess, some of either, I don't know if it was Bruce or Jim's notes, bringing the height down. But I'm curious what the reason is for the fence in the front of, like, being able to completely fence in the property or the front of the school. Is that like a, I don't know, maybe this is a question for the architect. Is that like a standard school? Issue?
It's related to security. I can tell you that for sure. It is a security issue. Mr. Stern has very strongly pointed out the need for the fencing around the entire perimeter with the gates at the driveways. When the school is not occupied, you know, there's no reason for anybody and doing anything on that property whatsoever, which is why there was a fencing. And that's why we, we, we thought a more appropriate type of fence along the front of the property, of course, would be this decorative metal fencing as opposed to a chain link fence would, which would not be appropriate. We had initially proposed that to be five feet high. But it was pointed out by Mr. Constantine that that is not in concert with the redevelopment planning standards. We are permitted, however, to do a four foot high fence in the front when it's within, located within the front yard setback. And that's what we agreed to do.
Okay. And the other question, again, I guess it's not really something to, of my concern per se, but it's sort of, I find it interesting. So the design of the parking lot for the sixteen cars where the four buses are going to be parked. It, you would come in, let's say, at the the end closest to the cul-de-sac, like the furthest end, and then leave on the side, let's say, closest to Madison Avenue. I don't know how to, I guess, if I got my bearings, like Northwest, whatever. But the point is, I'm curious how those buses navigate. I guess my, this would be the simpler way to ask this question. Did our engineers look at this parking lot for circulation? It just seems like if the in and out were in the opposite direction, those buses would have a lot easier time coming and going. And, you know, I don't drive a bus, so it's not going to be my problem. But it's, it just seems awkward. And I was just curious whether we've given any, you know, any sort of feedback about that, that parking lot.
No, it's, it's a good question. And the, my opinion, I think this is the more appropriate and way for the circulation to occur for the sake of the buses. If the buses come in on, along that easterly driveway, as it's shown on the site plan, they'll, they'll get themselves into the parking lot. They'll make the right to sort of get to within that, you know, wide drive aisle between the the six spaces and the ten spaces. And then they can back themselves.
They back in and then they pull out.
And then they can pull out. It's just a more safer movement in that regard.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for what we've heard so far? Okay, so, um, I, Mr. Clarkin, are we going to hear about the traffic study or any of that information at this time?
We were not going to present the traffic engineer. As I indicated in my opening remarks, the traffic issues were vetted extremely rigorously with traffic reports that were reviewed by the Borough Traffic Engineer. Recommendations were made, a counter memorandum was prepared. And we believe all those traffic issues have been put to rest.
I still find it unusual that we haven't, that we're not hearing anything about that in a meeting. I'll take the advice from Roger or someone who would like to tell me otherwise, but we're just going to accept that other people worked this out and it's all good to go.
Well, it's, it's not that just anybody worked it out. It's that it was worked out in conjunction with the Borough Traffic Engineer. Recommendations were made. Those recommendations were accepted. And that entire parking analysis and recommendations were included in the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement.
In response to your question, Madam Chair, you're right. Generally, you know, you end up hearing traffic testimony. This is a redevelopment plan that's had a long history. And I understand what Mr. Clarkin is saying that, that because of that long history, there's been an awful lot of back and forth involving Borough experts and Borough consultants. And therefore, they, since they have complied with all of those requests, they felt it was not necessary. That's their argument. What I understand your concern is, is that you would like to hear, because this is a public hearing, you would like as not just yourself, but I mean, the board and potentially the public would like to hear what the end results of that analysis was. So that it is on the record and you as a board can can review it and analyze it. Recognizing admittedly, as Mr. Clarkin has pointed out, that this is a variance free application and now an exception free application. But you still have the right, if you choose, as a board, to request that information to be made, a presentation.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Well, I guess another way to put it would be, you know, it was presented in the package. If I had a question about, just a simple question about the traffic study, would it be appropriate to ask it now? And then who, would someone be able to answer that question?
The first part of your question is, yeah, it's appropriate to answer it now. Whether somebody can answer it, that I don't know. We'll find that out.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I could try to provide a little insight here. So we.
Well, what, well, actually, why don't I just ask my simple question? And we'll see, maybe there's a really simple answer and we don't need to get into it. So I'm just noticing that during, and perhaps, and again, that what was provided to the board is the applicant's traffic engineer's report. And then a second report saying that they've taken into account whatever our feedback was. But I have not seen what our direct feedback was that they're responding to. My only question is, it's, it provides a scope of study and it talks about the different intersections. And it provides the intersection of Madison Avenue and North Fourth, Madison Avenue and Lincoln, Madison Avenue and Harrison, Madison Avenue and Cleveland. Madison Avenue and Grant Avenue is nestled in between all those. It just seemed quite curious that there was no mention of what was happening at that intersection. So it might just be an oversight in the way this was written. But it just seemed pretty curious that the intersection that goes, that happens between Harrison and Lincoln, what isn't mentioned in the report.
Madam Chair, it might be because Grant is a dead end. I'm not sure.
Right, but let me just quickly provide some context. There was a round of planning that we began regarding the Cleveland Avenue corridor in January of two thousand nineteen, so almost two years ago. Council announced it. We were beginning that process. We had community engagement, both two meetings in January of two thousand nineteen. And then later that spring, we had a larger summary meeting. What came out of that process was identifying that traffic was a big issue. So when we moved from that earlier stage of, let's just get our hands around the issue and get community input into actually coming under contract to do the redevelopment plan, the Borough specifically asked us to, and I should say at that point, Mr., the applicant had his traffic expert, you know, provide some information. And I, and I think in fairness, it raised more questions than it answered in some ways. So we were asked to bring a traffic consultant under our umbrella in the redevelopment plan. So I H Engineers was engaged. They reviewed the work that John Ray, the applicant's traffic engineer, had prepared, came back with a host of questions. Mr. Ray's initial report, I H Engineers report are both contained as appendices in the redevelopment plan as well as the applicant's engineer agreeing and signing off and resolving every single issue raised by the Borough's traffic engineer. So those three attachments are all appendices and were incorporated. And basically, we did not advance the redevelopment plan until every traffic issue that they had identified, that we had our expert look at, was basically brought to closure. On top of that, there was a whole series of infrastructure improvements that looked at intersections beyond those that were identified in the traffic study, in part, Kim, because of issues you and the planning board raised. When we put together the list of public infrastructure improvements, that is, an appendix or an attachment and a major element of the redevelopers agreement that council approved. So I'm just only providing the context to say that traffic came up as a huge issue early on, you know, lit up the spectrum that we needed to deal with it. And we tried to address it, but a lot of those things were addressed months and months ago in the redevelopment plan or in the, the quite extensive list of infrastructure improvements, which did look at intersections beyond those looked at by the traffic engineers per the request of the planning board when you reviewed the redevelopment plan. So I'm only saying all that to say that we were, you know, trying to take notes and follow through on all those issues all the way through.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could, I was able to reach out to the traffic engineer. And I have an answer to your question.
Okay.
He did not study Grant because he believed that it would be no different in terms of levels of service than any of the other intersections that he did study. And in fact, this one would be, have less of an impact because once again, it is a dead end street.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else from the board have any questions at this time? Okay, and so, Mr. Clarkin, do I understand that that was the full testimony that you wanted to provide your, from your professionals?
Yes, that concludes our direct case.
Okay, so it is getting late. So I, I am going to, with Emma's help, open up the meeting to the public and the board will, of course, still have an opportunity to get into any other questions after we hear from the public. So again, if you're here from the public and you wish to speak, you can raise your hand if you're on a telephone by pressing star nine. Or if you are in the Zoom, you can raise your hand, raise the, hit the raise hand button in the app. And Emma will announce you by reading out your name. But then you will have to introduce yourself by providing your first and last name and your address.
And again, Madam Chair, just to clarify, as I had said, in the prior application, some members might still be, the public might have been there. But as, as has been done with all of the applicant's witnesses, they were sworn in because that's the procedure that needs to be followed. The members of the public will be giving comments. That amounts to testimony. Therefore, they will have to be sworn in as well. It is not intended to intimidate or in any way harass anybody. It is just a requirement that is necessary in order to keep this project or to keep the hearing on track. So I just wanted to explain that. Sometimes people wonder why.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, Emma, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak at this time?
We do. First person is Michael R.
Mr. R, do you, do you swear testimony that you're about to give will be the truth so help you God?
I affirm, and I also have my wife here.
And your, and your wife, is she going to testify as well?
She may speak as well.
Hi, I'm Esther.
And you, and thank you.
Hi, I'm her.
And you also affirmed that all the testimony that you.
Yes.
Okay, would you both be kind enough to give us your names and your addresses, please?
Sure. Michael and Esther Reese, R E I S S, four oh one Grant Avenue.
Thank you.
So I have a number of items. So the first one that that I'll start with is the sidewalks that will be added to Madison between Cleveland and Harrison as well as Harrison and Grant. So, you know, that was item I in response to section five dot four. So the question I have or the concern I have is in section B, it indicates that the location and width of sidewalks shall be consistent with the location and width of existing sidewalks adjacent to or near the redevelopment area. To be developed, sidewalks shall continue across all driveway openings. So that, that section, that's, that's section B of the, of the document. The concern I have is section, section D. So section C basically says that, you know, I'll mention section C. It says the minimum width of the sidewalk along the north side of Cleveland for the Cleveland Avenue Madison Avenue intersection to the front entrance of the principal structure of partial A shall be six feet. So that, that, I'm fine. So that, I'm fine, I'm good with. The concern is then D says, "The minimum width of the sidewalk for all other areas shall be five feet." And I believe some of the documentation may refer to five and a half feet. So the concern I have is that, again, section B says that it should be consistent with the locations and widths of the existing sidewalks. All the other sidewalks on Harrison, across the street, and on Madison, as well as on Grant, are all four feet wide. So that's my first concern. So I'd like to understand, you know, what, you know, so I would like to see it consistent with that four feet. And so I don't know if that's, you know, something that can be discussed or addressed now. So that's my first concern. So do we want to-
Maybe you should, maybe you could just quickly go through your other concerns and then we'll just get them all addressed at one time.
There's also, in response to item, where'd it go? Item K is recommended that the missing sidewalks are added along Harrison Avenue north of Madison Avenue. So I'm assuming that's Harrison going downhill uphill to the border of Edison. Is that correct?
Yeah, who is going to, Mr. Turner, is this, do you speak to this or Mr. Clarkin? Who is going to speak to sidewalks?
Yes, we're going to install the improvements that are necessary and required in accordance with that redevelopment plan as spelled out as outlined in Exhibit, Exhibit 2, which has the infrastructure improvements outlined in it. And in there, there is a number of improvements that are located throughout the neighborhood, including the sidewalk areas that I believe are being referred to. So those improvements will be consistent with that redevelopment plan.
Right. So I'm not sure exactly which page or section you're referring to, but the concern I have is that I'm looking at one of the maps that was provided where it indicates the, you know, the new sidewalks, talks about the curbs. But as far as the sidewalks down Harrison, it does not, it seems to indicate, install two-way bicycle pedestrian lanes with striping, et cetera, install no parking signs. It doesn't indicate sidewalks going from Harrison all the way until the border of Edison. So that's my question and concern. Is that part of your plan or not?
No. The plan is to not install any additional sidewalks over and above that's in the redevelopment plan and required by that plan.
Well, again, it does mention that in the redevelopment plan. Item K, again, is recommended that missing sidewalks are added along Harrison Avenue north of Madison Avenue.
Though, north of, not along Harrison, I believe that's along Madison Avenue.
That would be item I. Okay, so that, so that, you know, either you're repeating yourself in describing it different ways, or you're talking about, you know, two different things. So that, you know, you need to clarify that for me.
What page are you on, sir, in the redevelopment plan?
So I'm actually looking at the response letter. I believe that's actually, that's in there, is one of the appendices. I can look, I can, I can look for that in a second, if you like.
Within the redevelopment plan itself?
I believe you added it as an appendix. This is, I'm referring to response letter, let me get you the exact name, that's on the website. It's called MRA Response Letter 1.22.20.pdf.
Is that dated January 22nd?
Yes.
And you're under, okay, so that's right, the responses that are all item I, J, K. And so you're saying, I'm sorry, which, you're up to L or M?
Item I and item K. So-
Is this the McDonough Ray Report, Madam Chair?
Excuse me?
It's the McDonough Ray Report, January the 22nd, 2020. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. So item I, my understanding is the sidewalks on Madison are going from Cleveland to Harrison and then from Harrison to Grant. And my concern there is the width of those sidewalks. The second question I have is item K. That's talking about adding sidewalks north of Harrison. My question is, what, how far north of Harrison is that going? Is that just going down to the bridge? Or is that going all the way over to the Edison border?
So item K reads, "It is recommended that missing sidewalks are added along Harrison Avenue, north of Madison Avenue." Now-
And then the response is, "The applicant agrees to construct the missing sidewalks provided that the Borough of Highland Park obtains the easements a right-of-way, right-of-way to allow this construction."
Right. And what, so again, it's not clear to me where that, those sidewalks in Harrison are being built, are being added. Because, you know, if you look at, which document is-
We do have, we have a map, actually, that indicates all these areas.
Yeah, so that map-
I might, I can't get to that map right now.
Yeah, that map does not seem to indicate sidewalks at that, you know, past that area.
And it does not. You're correct. It is not included in the redevelopment plan requirements.
Okay, so then, all right, so-
Because there would be necess, there would be easements required the borough to obtain in order to install a sidewalk along that area.
Right. But again, from the safety of the children walking to school, if they're coming from that direction, along Harrison, from Edison border until the bridge, there are no sidewalks on either side of the street. So again, from the, from your response, depending on how far, how much you read into it, that area may or may not be covered. It sounds like you're saying that you're not covering the area from Edison to the bridge.
That's correct. Not with sidewalks, we are not.
So, right, so again, for, so for section I, my open question is the width of the sidewalk that will be put in place. And I don't know if that's, you know, to the builder or to the, or to the board. So additional, additional items that I have are, let's see, so relating to the traffic patterns, and I don't, again, I'm kind of a bit of a layman there, the concern I have, and it's more of a safety concern, is that the corner of Harrison and Madison is only, has a stop sign, you know, one set of stop signs, it's not a four-way stop, it's just a standard two-way stop. There are constant, there are frequent accidents there, including cars flipping over. So, you know, so the concern I have there is that, you know, with the traffic analysis, again, I don't know how much that takes into the consideration of the safety of, you know, the children going to and from school, as well as the history of accidents that have happened at that particular corner. But, you know, isn't that where we're adding the stop signs? No, you're, I think you're talking about Cleveland and Madison. I'm referring to Harrison and Madison. As far as, you know, I, we've witnessed numerous accidents on Harrison and Madison. We, I don't, I don't believe I've seen an accident on the corner of Cleveland and Madison.
So Harrison and Madison, the extent of the improvements at that intersection, again, which has been, you know, vetted out over a number of, over, you know, a year and a half plus, is we're going to install a new crosswalk, restrike the worn-out existing crosswalk at that intersection, and install new ADA ramps with a detectable warning pad, and delineate the yellow no parking boxes in all directions so that we keep the vehicles away from that intersection.
Yeah, again, from a safety perspective, I would really recommend that they look, you look into adding or working with the borough to make that a four-way stop. The other question, the other item is the cycling paths. I wanted to find out, in particular on Madison, which side of the street that would be on? There's one side that has parking and one side that has no parking?
So I believe it's to be determined at this point, working with the professionals in the town, in terms of what side it would be more appropriate to locate the shared lane markings along Madison Avenue. And that would go from North Fourth Avenue down to, all the way down to Cleveland Avenue. Whether that's on the east side of Madison or the west side, I think that's still to be determined.
Okay. Again, just to point out, the west side is the side that has no parking, which would probably make more sense, at least from my perspective. The other, one other item that was kind of mentioned earlier on Cleveland about drainage, I believe, you know, Harrison had some similar roadwork that was done. And the rainwater sewer was moved farther into Madison from Harrison. And when there is bad rain, there is quite a large amount of water that comes across that. Again, just concern for the students when they, you know, if there's a large amount of rain going to and from school.
For cars driving by and getting them all wet.
Right, that too, as well as being splashed by passing cars.
I've got video. I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank you for your comments. I do want to interrupt and say that the hour is getting late, and I know that there are probably other people from the public that want to speak. So I don't want to cut you off, but maybe you could just, you know, check your list, see if there's any other important issues that you'd like to bring to our attention? So we have a little bit of time to hear from some other folks as well.
That's it. I mean, the main issue that's still open is really, again, the width of the sidewalk.
Okay, so maybe, Mr. Turner, can you give a, it sounds like there might be a quick answer to that.
Sure, yeah. Any of the sidewalk that's being replaced will be replaced in kind in terms of width. So if there's a four-foot wide sidewalk along that particular street, it will be a four-foot wide sidewalk installed. The sidewalk, as you get closer to the school, gets wider in width because it's anticipated that the schoolchildren will sort of get more congregated as they get closer to the school. And it's more appropriate to have a six-foot wide sidewalk or a five-foot wide sidewalk once it gets past the point where children and parents would be entering into the school property. So that's why that width is a little wider than you would see under normal residential neighborhood standards, which is a four-foot wide sidewalk.
But I think the concern was if you were connecting a four-foot sidewalk to a four-foot sidewalk, are you going to connect it with another four-foot sidewalk? And I think the answer would be yes.
That is correct, Madam.
You're going to keep things consistent.
Going to keep it consistent, yes.
Emma, do we have anyone else from the public who has any comments or questions?
Yes, we do. We have Ethan Schoolman.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address? And I guess you don't really need to spell your name since it's right on the-
Ethan Schoolman, 423 Harrison Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm on the Environmental Commission in the town, so I just want to be clear that I'm speaking as an individual and a homeowner. So I want to thank everyone and the architect and the builders for their presentation. I want to personally say I'm delighted that, to see a school potentially moving in there. I think it's very appropriate use for the space. And, you know, we always want to do things that are good for the kids. So I think that's great. I'm glad you guys, that everyone's worked so hard on this. I have some questions. One is that, you know, I am curious, so I live on 423 Harrison, which is right, backs up against what I think was Lot C. So I am, I would like to see the renderings in terms of the trees that would be put in Lot B, I think, to shield, or to, you know, create some barriers between what we can see and the buses and the traffic and all that kind of thing. I'd be interested in seeing those renderings. I think in general, you know, I'm thinking about the Highland Park Middle School and High School and the elementary school, the Irving where my kids go, they've been doing a lot of tree plantings recently in the, in the big field around the playground on the, on the middle school. They've planted all kinds of trees around the water retention area as well. So I don't, I'm not an expert in the regulations and the ordinances, but I just think that it's really beautiful to have trees there, and it makes the school much more pleasant for the kids. I think it's a more relaxing environment and that sort of thing. It's better for the neighbors as well. So I would be interested in seeing exactly what you have planned there. And you have to say, as someone, you know, our bedroom is on the second story of our house, and the light pollution from some of the kind of warehouses and industrial facilities across the street is pretty intense. I've wanted to say something about it for a while. So, you know, again, I don't know what the ordinance is specifically with respect to the dimmers and the dark sky. That sounds good. But I do want everyone to know that, you know, the lights can get pretty bright in our bedrooms, and I assume in our neighbors' bedrooms as well. So taking that into consideration is really important. I, you know, I share the concerns and some of the board members expressed about sort of community, large-scale community events on off-school hours. And so one question I have about that is whether buses would be used in off-school hours. You know, that would be part of the, I understand vehicles aren't going to be transporting people who go to the schools on Saturdays, but I'm just curious, is there any regulations or ordinances around the use of school vehicles for off, for sort of non-regular school hours? And my last question is, and I'm trying to keep these fairly brief, I understand it is pretty late. I'm curious to hear a bit more about Lot C, so that I just picked up a little bit of, a little remark saying that that is eventually planned for a single-family house. So I think it's very appropriate, you know, it's a good place for a house right there. But I would be, you know, concerned if there was some, even a sort of inkling of developing that as another parking lot, for instance, something like that. So anyway, those are my four questions, and I want to thank everyone again for their preparation.
Okay, Emma, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have Avi Wolf.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God. You are on mute.
To be muted. Oh, there we go, they're unmuted.
Yes.
Would you state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Avi Wolf, and I live at 403 Harrison Avenue.
And I'm Marna Schindler Wolf, also at 403 Harrison Avenue.
I apologize, I missed that, sorry.
Just state your first name again, please.
Marna.
Marna, thank you. And your question or comment?
Thanks. Yes, so my concern also is the width of the sidewalk being that we're on the corner of Harrison and Madison Avenue. And our concern with the width of the sidewalk going towards the school, and about how far onto our driveway it would, it would be, and would, if we'd be able to park our car and whatnot, in that, in our driveway. Also, if, I wanted to know if there were any proposed plans to plant any trees along the sidewalk that would potentially be going in, and if there would be any, many allocated from the town or the board or whatnot to provide maintenance as the trees get larger, as I know that usually the homeowner is responsible for maintaining the sidewalks, if, you know, if the tree roots bring it up or whatnot. So those are, those are our concerns.
So the sidewalk that would be installed along Madison Avenue from, from Grant Avenue to Cleveland Avenue would be, would be four-foot wide. I'm assuming that's what the width of the existing sidewalk is currently in that corridor. It will be placed within the public right-of-way, not on anybody's public or private property, rather. So it will cross your driveway, and there will also be a street- Uh, and, uh, there will also be, uh, street trees, uh, planted throughout that same area between Grant, Grant and, uh, Cleveland Avenue. Uh, that's part of the redevelopment plan.
Okay, and it, would there be any, um, money allocated to provide maintenance for those trees in the long term?
No.
No, so the homeowner would be responsible for, for any maintenance?
Are those considered street trees? Do you want to speak to that, Jim?
Yeah, I, the, the infrastructure improvements in the, in the redevelopers agreement, Exhibit 2, Infrastructure Improvements in the Redevelopment Agreement, states that the new sidewalk along the north side of Madison from Cleveland to Grant will measure approximately five and one-half to six feet in width. So because there is no existing sidewalk on those blocks there, um, that was a place where it was, there was a potential to have it be wider because it's also the route that collects the other sidewalks. It's sort of the, the funnel point coming down Madison to the school. So there was, that was what was built into that. The other places where it's for, you would obviously match that. That's what's the redevelopment plan states.
Thank you, Jim. My mistake, I apologize.
That's okay.
It's getting, it's getting late.
And, and it would be, yeah, located inside the existing curb line. And it will include replacement of the existing curb and the driveway aprons. So if your house is at one of those corners and you have your driveway on Madison, I believe that's your condition. Yeah, they would be replacing the whole street section. So you'll get a new driveway apron and there'll be new curb line as well as new sidewalk along the whole block face on Madison.
And you're proposing that it's about, it would be about five, a five-foot sidewalk?
It says in the redevelopers agreement, five and a half to six feet. I think the, you know, detail to be finalized.
Okay, thank you. Those are my two, um, my two questions, concerns that I wanted to address and thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank, thank you for your questions. Uh, Emma, do we have anybody else?
One more, Mary Botian.
Do you swear?
Mary's, Mary, she's, she's still muted. There we go.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Yes, uh, Mary Botian, 709 Madison. Couple of quick things. One, my family is very supportive of the property being used as a school. Uh, we very much appreciate no more condos there and we very much appreciate the drug-free zone that would be created. Also, uh, to the point of having this be a seven-day-a-week situation, um, that is new to us. We were under the impression it was five days a week usage, so we appreciate that clarification. Uh, also, that the extent to which events on the weekend, you know, would and would not be taking place. I think that's important for the town to keep track of and that the use of, as a school is predominant. Also, to Mr. Reese's point, I was under the impression that the sidewalk would in fact be extended on Harrison all the way down to the Edison border. This is something that's been discussed several times. And, um, if that, if there's confusion over that, or at this point they're saying that's not the case, I think this is our opportunity in fact to make sure that does happen. It makes no sense to have kids walking up that way through Highland Park on no sidewalk there for those stretches until they get to halfway up Harrison Avenue. That makes no sense. So I think this is our opportunity to put that in place, one way or the other. Secondly, on sidewalks, um, there's, again, quite a bit of confusion on whether it's four feet or five and a half or six. Those of us that have this sidewalk pending on our, the front of our house, the sides of our houses, um, we were told in the past by the mayor and by several other members of this, uh, panel, that that would be, quote, negotiable. So, uh, we're not looking to have five and a half and six-foot sidewalks put along those stretches. That is not consistent with the sidewalks that run on Harrison, Cleveland, or Grant. Uh, at a maximum, they're four feet. So again, we're not looking to have anything beyond four feet and in fact, we would be requesting that they'd be less than that if possible. Because this cuts across, you know, the sides of all of our homes within the reach of fences, within the reach of cars, within the reach of air conditioners. So this is something we really need to look at. Uh, second, uh, thirdly, at the intersection, the issue of putting planters in the street and plastic stanchions, um, and flashing lights, uh, those are all things that, um, we would certainly be very concerned about. I do not know how the fire trucks, large delivery vehicles, uh, would be making their way through that intersection with planters on the areas described. I've seen now, uh, very large trucks go over the burn corner very often, including some of our emergency vehicles. So the idea of making that more narrow is kind of the opposite of what I would think. You'd want it to be as wide and safe as possible. So just to throw that out there, and certainly no planters in the street. That's in Section Exhibit A, excuse me, Exhibit 2, Section 1. The flashing lights again on the stop signs there. Um, as somebody who lives right on that corner, I would really have to say, um, please, let's put that on the, way, way on the back burner and something that would only be installed if it turned out to be absolutely critically safety necessary. They had flashing lights at the corner of Lincoln and Madison for years, flashing stop signs. They were so awful, they were taken down. So we're not looking to have something like that at that corner and be extremely disruptive to our quality of life. The issue of sidewalks being installed, again, across our four properties, um, I know for my property, that's an extra 100 feet of sidewalk. That's a lot of sidewalk and my neighbors have similar situations. We would be asking for the developer to put something aside for us for future maintenance of that increased homeowner's burden. Uh, something in escrow, because with those trees there, of course, there are going to be sidewalk slabs coming up in the future. Um, I, that's a big burden for us all to bear through no, you know, um, initiation of our own. So, like, we would strongly be requesting that this be worked out, that something in escrow be put aside for our future new sidewalk maintenance. Also, just a, a moment, uh, on the rendering, I was under the impression that the trees in front of the school would be put in at four feet tall to grow to fuller heights. Um, one of the renderings I saw looked like there were just small bushes out in front. So, uh, those are my issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Emma, do we have anyone else at this?
There is one more person whose phone number ends in 1283.
Okay, there we go. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Yes, uh, I affirm, my name is Lou Garlatti, uh, 401 Cleveland Avenue, uh, the adjacent, uh, property to the proposed site.
Spell your last name, please.
Garlatti, sure, I'm sorry, G-A-R-L-A-T-T-I.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, and thank you to everyone for this opportunity. Uh, I just wanted to comment. I had one concern, uh, with regard to the application as regards to the parking, uh, as it relates to the ancillary uses, uh, you know, the non-school uses that were discussed. Um, the only other comment, and I did send a note to the, uh, to Ms. Santiago, uh, as per the public notice, I noticed in the application, two, two issues or errors that I believe may exist. One being the disclosure of the stockholder, uh, document. The entity name was misspelled. So if the board acts it, I think that has to be corrected and, and I'm not sure if this is an issue, but the parcel offset list that was also posted with the, uh, package in the application did not include our properties on Cleveland. I, I do acknowledge, we did get notices, you know, we got the certified notices, they're just not on that list that is attached to the application. So tho- those are the issues, uh, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Emma, do we have anybody else?
No.
Okay, so, um, being that there's, uh, no one else from the public wishing to, um, speak, we'll close the public portion of this meeting and, um, it does seem like, um, that the public's just sort of general questions about how the, uh, sidewalk's going to impact their own private properties did bring up some inconsistencies or, um, in either where the sidewalks were going or the size of the sidewalks. And I think that's a bit of a, of a red flag. Again, perhaps this is something, um, that our, um, borough planner and engineer could work out, but it, it does seem like there needs to be, um, some input or guidance about what, what makes sense in, in relation to the width. I mean, I, you know, obviously, if all the sidewalks in the neighborhood are four-foot, it seems like, oh, you would make them four-foot. We keep hearing this argument that because it's a school, you know, near a school, that, that they should be enlarged to five or six foot. So I, I don't know that we're going to resolve this, uh, in this moment. So I would take some guidance on that issue.
Yeah, I would agree that, that the, uh, you know, the why, you know, based upon, let's say, increased traffic and this and that, whether that in fact will actually be the case and, and, you know, especially along, you know, you know, streets in front of houses, in front of the school or adjacent to the school, you could see it. But I don't think you're really going to get a lot of walking traffic to school. You might, but, uh, I don't think the amounts really necessitate those wider sidewalks, but that's just my opinion.
And I don't think our other schools, um, but again, I would have to think and not know because we don't have information before, so.
Look, I, I, I will say, you know, I, I attended RPry, the other Yeshiva Day School right down the road and all the kids, what, 30 years ago, walked to school from all over town. And believe me, when you got to the front entrance, it, it could really start to congregate and, and you needed the extra space. So I'll, I'll just say from that perspective, when everyone's trying to make first bell and a lot of kids are walking and they will walk to the school, it's going to happen. I do.
Right, I think.
Might be a place for some extra space.
Well, and I would agree, in like the front of the Bartle School, it's all sidewalk in the front of, um, well, there's a big U at the middle school. But, um, but the people that were commenting are commenting from like, um, the Madison Avenue, like, in other words, a block, you know, you're two blocks away.
On Madison Avenue itself, but as you get closer to the school.
But it sounds like the plan called for on Madison for them to be five. So I, I think we need some, some, we need to know what's going on, basically. What, what's actually proposed and what, what the, what the intention is.
Given, given the impact that this is having on people's homes, um, you know, this is on their property. I, I, I think we should be, try to be as gentle as possible. Um, and, uh, people are being very positive about it, but, and I, and I didn't even feel like I had a strong understanding of what, what the proposal is. Is it five, six, four?
Right, I think that's the bigger issue.
We owe that to people and we, we owe it to them not to, um, do more than we need to.
And again, I mean, I, I'm actually impressed with the design of the school, the, the way that they, the access to it, the fact that there is this covering. So obviously, you know, some kids aren't going to get dropped off right in front. They might get dropped off on one of those further blocks. But I don't know that that means that you line, you know, Madison and all these other places with a wider sidewalk.
Madam Chair, the applicant certainly has no objection to reducing the width, uh, to four feet. But in deference to Mr. Constantine, who I really think was more or less the architect of, of these infrastructure improvements, I certainly think we should all hear from him.
I, I do note that there's, there's, there may not really be as much confusion as you think. If you look at Exhibit, uh, 2 in the, in the plan, the pedestrian and sidewalk safety, uh, subsection C makes it clear that the, uh, sidewalks are going to be between five and a half and six feet. So if there's the general consensus that they shouldn't be that, you know, then I, that's, that's, again, up to the board. Uh, it does change the, um, the agreement and that would then, i- in effect, require the board to, uh, grant that exception in effect. If that's your inclination.
So, uh, so Roger, did you just say that all the new sidewalks would be? Because we heard testimony that any, I'm sorry.
What I said was if you look at Exhibit 2.
I know, I don't know, I don't even know what you're referring to.
Okay, I'm, I'm referring to, there's a document that I have in my file and, and that, that's part of the problem. Maybe not everybody has the same documents. There is a Borough of Highland Park Resolution Number 7-Dash-20-Dash-214 and it's, uh, it, it seems to be adopting the redevelopment plan. And then there's the redevelopment agreement that was entered into on August the 19th, 2020. And then there's a whole bunch of pages in regard to that. Included in those pages are some exhibits. Exhibit 2, which unfortunately, I think, I was a little confused as to what people were talking about, uh, and I started to focus in on that unfortunately a little late. But it appears as though Exhibit 2, within that redevelopment agreement, subsection 2C.
Is there a page or no?
No, unfortunately, there's no page. I know.
Title is Infrastructure Improvements of Exhibit 2.
Correct.
Just a point of clarification. Is there a map that shows this sidewalk is this width and it goes from here to here, that you could actually physically see it rather than words in a paragraph?
Well.
We do have a.
The answer, let me just, let me just read what it says so that you can understand. Construction of the new sidewalk along the north side of Madison Avenue from Cleveland Avenue to Grant Avenue, period. This new sidewalk will measure approximately five and a half to six feet in width and will be located inside the existing curb line. Sidewalks improvements, uh, will include replacement of the existing curb and driveway aprons and installation of one new crosswalk at Harrison Avenue, intersection restriping of any worn, worn-out crosswalks and installation of, of schools, uh, crossings signage along Madison, installation of one new ADA access ramp. And it goes on for other things that are not particularly related to this, this discussion. So that's what it actually says. So if the, the members of the public unfortunately did not make reference to that specific document, but that's what they were referring to and that's what's in. So if the board feels as though that, in light of some of the conversation, if you wanted more detail, uh, you're not going to get it tonight, I wouldn't think, because it's now quarter to 12. But the fact of the matter is, um, you know, either you're going to grant that waiver if that's your inclination, uh, or you're not. Or you, or as suggested by Pedrick, if you wanted to get some kind of a schematic to be seen at the next time, well then, that's what you would want to.
While, so while we're sort of opening up some quick, you know, some, uh, of our open-ended questions, it, it seemed like there was also an open-ended question as to, uh, a sidewalk, um, being constructed from Madison on Harrison down towards that ravine. And that, um, someone seems, Mary Botian, believed that there was, yeah, an indication. I, I'm trying, there's, we have a map, so here's the deal. My screens for some reason are all frozen now. I can't get to any, I can't get to my screens. I, I don't, I did something. We have part of, uh, an email that Jen sent to us, part of our package shows the map with a dotted line of all proposed sidewalks with an arrow that basically spells out what those, you know, I don't know if it, I think it, I don't know if it gives a range of width or whether it specifies a width. But if someone wanted to share their screen with that, it was an email that we received, um, on Tuesday, that we do have, I, I think we may have this material.
While, while we're finding that, Kim?
Yes.
I think we should look as far as, what, where the distribution of the students is, at least now. An awful lot of them are over in Madison.
I would, before we get into distribution and looking at it that specifically, I will, I will just make, give you an anecdote, which is, my whole neighborhood, all of my kids have never been driven to school in the entire, they've, they walked to Bartle School, they walked to the middle school, they walked to the high school, three kids. middle school, they walked to the high school, three kids. All of my neighbors do. All of our sidewalks are four feet. I think like we, we don't, like, I guess what I'm saying is aside from looking at that exact, where those exact kids are coming from and on what exact streets, I think we could anecdotally make the argument that kids in Highland Park, they, we do walk to school and the sidewalks are four foot wide and there doesn't seem to be bottlenecking problems.
Agreed.
Okay. You know, I think it's more important, and now maybe Rebecca would disagree because she was happy to walk in the street when she went to high school or middle school. But, you know, I would be more, yeah.
It was uphill both ways.
That you could, you could be killed on that. I'm, I congratulate you that you're still alive because I walk there most mornings and it can get a little dicey. But, you know, I would, I think, obviously, looking at making sure that some of these sidewalks connect are important. I don't know that they'd be six, six foot wide on, you know, like Mary's, that Mary Botian's property on that corner, I mean, I don't even know how, and the other corner, I don't know how you could put a six foot wide, you know, I'm sure that you could, but it just seems disproportionate to put a six foot wide sidewalk on people's personal properties because there's a school nearby. That, I guess that's my opinion, I'll open it up for further conversation. And again, the hours late, if this were a, an in-person meeting, we would have called it at 11:00. I think we had made that rule years ago. I'm so out of practice of being actually in a meeting that we've, we're run amok here a little bit. So it's now, the time is now 11:48 and I think it's been beyond the call to ask people to stay up, participate as you all have.
Can I just ask a, I don't, I, four foot sidewalk seems what every other sidewalk is and that seems fine. I'm just worried or wondering two things about procedure. If the document that Roger just read, Exhibit Two, Section Two C, says five and a half to six and a half, what does it mean to say that all of a sudden tonight, we're going to decide four and a half from a procedural standpoint? Because it, can we move ahead with the approval with a caveat of that? Or I just, I, from a, from a very brass tacks procedural standpoint, what are the options?
Roger hit it.
I had one more thing. I don't think we can, we have the ability to make any decision on four feet versus six feet. I don't think we have anything in front of us. And it seems like there is some misunderstanding or maybe what was said to the public over the last two years versus what's, what's in the, what's in the plan right now. So I don't know how we can, you know, make a decision on our own to say it should be four or it should be six. I also agree, we came with what you said, knowing that area, I don't know how you take six feet off of some of those corner properties and, and it's into people's side yards and into their driveways. I, you know, also, the reason for the, it said for the five and a half to six feet, they'd say approximately, didn't say must be, is that it was in compliance with the bike and pedestrian plan recommendations. So again, I don't know, it was that the major impetus for it and maybe we, maybe Roger and, not Roger, the Jim and the applicants, engineers need to go back and, and work on this a little bit more and speak to the neighbors, only a couple of neighbors that we're dealing with there and come up with something that works, you know, that works for everybody.
But my question is, is what does that mean? Like, does that mean that we, we have to go back again to the borough, to the process? That's where I'm hoping Roger can clarify.
Well, before Alan, Alan was very quiet during the, up until.
I had to talk at some point.
So let me just suggest that my opinion is that this is before this board, there is a developer's agreement. The applicant's attorney, the developer's attorney, has indicated they have no objection to reducing the four and a half, the five and a half to six foot sidewalk to four. My opinion is that, forgetting all the things that Alan said, because that may be something that you decide you cannot make this decision. But if you decide to make the decision, I believe you could end up saying that your, your decision is thus and so, and the sidewalks on Harrison and, and, well, I'm not sure there are, how do you think, on Harrison, and on Madison will be four feet and you are granting an exception from the developer's agreement to that effect. I believe you can do that, especially since the applicant is not objecting. So I don't think there's a problem. The question of whether you choose to do that and taking into account Alan's comments, that's up to you.
I think Jim has a hand up as well.
I was just going to add in, this is one of the special routes that's in the ped bike plan. I think generally, complete streets, pedestrian advocates and professionals have been trying to move communities where possible from four feet to five foot minimum sidewalks and actually gets into issues of two people walking comfortably, being able to pass people comfortably and inducing more comfortable pedestrian behavior. That said, I know, speaking for, having, having several conversations with Terry Hovere, the redeveloper, redevelopment coordinator for the borough and administrator, that the intent of the borough is to go out and, and talk to the neighbors before we finalize the plans on these blocks. We put in this infrastructure, public infrastructure, Exhibit Two, what would be the widest possible sidewalk that we might want, because we know that there's going to be a need to go meet, it's four neighbors along there on those two blocks. And there is an intent that we will meet with them. And I think the planning board wants to recommend potentially reducing that in approval. That, that's, I believe that's on the table and we'll take that into consideration.
So, just, just really quickly, I, I would be, I think it's going to create a certain amount of anxiety if we say, well, this is what we would prefer, but we'll take it into consideration, see how it works out. I think that's going to create anxiety, particularly for, I mean, I'm thinking of that Mary Bodian's house on the corner of Cleveland and Madison. If those are six foot sidewalks and she thinks that's a possibility, that's, I think that's going to be very concerning to her because that's basically going to take a large portion of her lot and make it a sidewalk. She's going to lose her.
It's going to make it a cement, I also find it very interesting in a town where we're trying to green, right? We're worried about every tree and every shrub, but we're not worried about adding all that concrete on where someone's lawn used to be. I mean, it just, it just doesn't seem right to me.
So I'm not the expert on this, but I will, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, I think Jim is right, that they do have a sense that wider sidewalks are better for pedestrians and better for walking. So, and, you know, that they have made a series of recommendations that, that we're not including into this. So I would just throw that out there, that there's, there is an argument for wider sidewalks. But I think at this point that, that, I'm not sure what to do. I'm just saying that, that, that the Safe Walking Committee did put that out there at some point, so.
Yeah, and maybe from, purely from a biking, walking point of view, that, it probably does, but.
Right, from a philosophic, from a philosophical point of view, but if you went and stood on those pieces of properties, does it make sense? Sorry, Steve.
And is it, and is it fair to the individual? And, you know, it's not my house that they're putting a big slab of concrete on. So I suppose it's easy for me to say, but, but I think we need to balance that. And, you know, I'm not comfortable saying, well, we'll see how it works out and we'll do it if we can. I'm not comfortable with that. If the other sidewalk, if the other sidewalks in the neighborhood are four feet, seems good enough for me and I'm comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with five or six.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like we might have made a different, be holding a different opinion right now if we had really spent time being educated about this and shown what those properties, lots looked like and what the scale was and what it was going to do to them. And, you know, we're not getting any of that information. We're just, we're just sort of hearing a recommendation that, you know, it would be better for there to be a wider sidewalk.
Maybe we should ask for the planner or the engineers to come back with that plan and we deal with it next month.
So I do feel like we either need for, you know, we've left, we leave, we do leave some large issues to our planner and our engineer, you know, to be worked out. We've already discussed some of those this evening and that's, we do that with almost every application. And I could see how this is something that could be worked out that way, where we say the overall preference of the board was for the four foot, but that it has to be worked out, you know, with those parcels or in concert with those property owners, because it just, yeah, it just doesn't seem like we can universally make an across the board decision without more input, either from our planner or from those homeowners.
But I, but, but if I understand it, that's something that we could, as the planning board do, say that this is something that the planner can work out in consultation with the applicant and in consultation with the affected homeowners. And we could allow them to do that? Is that something that we're capable of doing and move the process forward?
Well, I guess what I wasn't saying very clearly is, that is generally what we often do. I feel that the caveat to this is that it was the planner who was suggesting that it be the six foot and that it's the board that really feels that that's excessive. And so how do we really make sure that it's the, you know, the, an outcome that the board would be satisfied with?
Again, to answer the question that was not posed to me, you can either, as I've indicated, you can either decide as seems to be, at least one board member indicating that he is uncomfortable with the five and a half to six feet and is only comfortable with the four, I believe that you have the right to simply say, you will take this action, but with regard to the sidewalks on Madison, it will be four and that you are granting an exception. You can do that. If you are uncomfortable doing that, we'll strike that. Number two, you can end up saying, as, as Matt just said, that you are deferring this to your planner and engineer in conjunction with the developer as well as the, the property owners and that they will work out the problem. That's option two. Option three is that you end up having that worked out during the next month, as is suggested by somebody, I don't remember who, and come back with a definitive decision at your January meeting. Those are your three options.
Could I say, can I throw away, we're worried about the safety of children on the sidewalks. We, I think we need to resolve the Harrison Avenue thing up to the Edison border.
Right, we have more than one problem that we're, that we have a loose end with.
And let me throw one last thing in, concerning the stormwater, I would like to, I would like us to come back and get a progress report from Bruce in January as to, hey, we're almost there, and then we approve the application, assuming that we get the sidewalk issue resolved.
I'm making an assumption, without regard to the last comment, I defer to Bruce on that, with regard to the issue of sidewalks on Harrison, while you did get a concurrence with regard to the sidewalk reduction on Madison by the developer, I don't know that you're going to get the same thing tonight with regard to sidewalks on Harrison. That's a fairly significant infrastructure improvement.
Previously, he's, it has been said Harrison Avenue would occur if the borough got the easements from the property owners.
Alan, all I'm telling is what I, and maybe I'm, maybe I should keep my mouth shut, wait to hear from Mr. Clarkin.
You're muted, Mr. Clarkin.
Madam Chair, the applicant is not willing to expend any additional money on infrastructure improvements over and above the very generous $200,000 that he has already committed.
Is that a way of saying that you're not going to put a sidewalk on Harrison?
Yes, it is.
And that, and that work, and that we are clear that, that it's not included, but I'll take that by your statement.
Yes, it is, Jim.
Because again, you know, and this is frustrating, that there are materials that we don't have, you know, that we are not looking at collectively. And granted, it's a strange format and there's been problem sharing materials, but it would have been nice to have, you know, as we're talking about sidewalks, for someone to be able to show us indeed where the sidewalks are proposed, where that, where new sidewalks are going and what the sizes of those sidewalks are.
We can request that.
So I guess at this point, it's now 12:02, I'm just going to take a straw poll, I guess, and.
I just ask one, one quick thing?
Sure.
Just, so, for the attorney, so how do you respond to the, the response in McDonough and Ray Associates' January 22nd document that says the applicant agrees to construct the missing sidewalks, provided Highland Park obtains the easements? Was that just incorrectly stated?
In those areas, we will.
Along Harrison Avenue, north of Madison, I certainly understand why the applicant may not want to do it, because I will bet that, that many of the students walking over there are not going to the applicant's school, but instead are going to the other private school that's there. I get that. But I just, would just want to hear what the rationale is for that response that's, that is a part of the redevelopment plan.
All right, just for the record, when we started discussing Harrison Avenue and Mr. Constantine is on this video and he can verify it, I was prepared to pull this entire redevelopment plan and come in and go into court to have this resolved. And it was decided clearly, no issues, there's no sidewalks on Harrison Avenue of our responsibility. It was the end, it was put, the scarrow's and markings are there and that's the end. If you want anything more, I yanked the application out.
That's fairly definitive.
So I would just argue that if we look at the totality of what has been offered in this process, and we look at the, all of the things that we are getting in this process, as a borough, it's quite significant. And I think that, as Mr. Stern very clearly said, he drew a line in the sand and said, this is not something I'm prepared to do. And, and, and I think, given the significant amount of, of other things that are there, that's something that I, I feel like that I can live with and something that I think is reasonable to move forward with. Others may disagree and there, you know, we may have a disagreement on that, but I think that we need to look not just at the one thing that we're not getting, but we need to look at the, all of the things that we are getting in this. And I think, and the totality of it, this is a very good deal for the borough.
So it, it does sound though, like Alan pointed out, some language that exists in the redevelopment, in the redevelopment plan, that you are, that the applicant is not going to do, which is, again, is that something then, if that's how that stands, does that have to be spoken to in terms of relief or whatever in, in this application?
And if Jim, if Jim, like I have, as I said, from a business perspective and even from a plan perspective, I could see how, why the applicant would not be looking to add sidewalks all the way down Harrison into, you know, up to the Edison border. And it's maybe possible that I guess this, this item K, and this was brought up by a member of the public, you know, again, it's not part of the plan, it's in, it's the, it's in a letter, M R, M R A, that's attached as an exhibit.
It's Appendix C.
Right, as, right. You know, and I guess it's not, as I said, it's not, it was attached as an appendix, it's not necessarily anywhere else, it's not in the resolution and it's not in the sort of meat of the redevelopment plan to say that, that that would be done. the, the sort of meat of the redevelopment plan to say that, that that would be done.
Okay.
I, I would say that maybe just again, provide a little bit of context. You know, it's late. You know, we had a, a clear direction, do as much as we can for traffic. We looked at, um, in fact, council, uh, Matt will verify, we, we, we looked at direction of council at portions of streets beyond, um, we tried to, to basically create as large a bundle of public improvements and benefits related to infrastructure. Then we're getting 5,000 lineal feet of pedestrian bicycle improvements, almost a mile. No, no other application has ever provided this much. The borough's, uh, Ped Bike Plan is taking a huge leap forward. Harrison north of Madison to the municipal boundary was a challenge. We looked at it and I know that there was a lot of concern that whether the borough was going to undertake trying to negotiate all those easements. So what is proposed and in the exhibit two is the requirement for a, a green bicycle lane that would act to narrow the street in terms of traffic calming, provide a safe bicycle route all the way to the municipal boundary. It's actually above and beyond what's called for in the Ped Bike Plan. And potentially, you know, pedestrians may also avail themselves of that bike lane for a safer walking route. But that's what's in exhibit two, that the council approved in the redevelopment agreement.
Okay, so I'm just going to back up to where I was about, I don't know, maybe 20 minutes ago and just sort of maybe do a, a straw poll about, um, people, board members comfort level with, um, just making the, a relief statement from the, uh, width of the sidewalks to allow for the four foot sidewalk at this time, having that worked out, if it was in a, um, worked out with property owners and the applicant, I guess mediated by our planner versus feeling that we, versus alternatively feeling like we really need, um, some better information about where those, what those streets are and what those parcels look like and whether we want to give more input about the proper width of those sidewalks a, a, at a future, you know, as either a special meeting in two weeks or what have you.
I would be comfortable with the first option.
So if you are fine with making an approval this evening with the caveat to what, how I just described handling the sidewalk issue, I just, I guess raise your, raise your hand. I'll just get a handle on.
So that I understood it, that would be to defer this by way of, um, a review by the, by, I, by Jim and the applicant, along with the input from the, uh,
Right.
property owners, uh, with regard to the width of the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
But we, but we approve tonight.
Correct.
Well, that's, yeah, that we would approve with the caveat that that would be one of the outstanding issues that, but, but that it also, but my piece would be that the, the homeowners must be included in just in terms of, you know, like, another, do you have to look at it parcel by parcel? Sidewalks are going to be consistent and make sure that, that the whole package makes sense.
But i- if, if, if one of the homeowners, suppose-
Yeah, let's suppose.
One say we're okay with six feet and one of them says, no, I, I want four, my understanding is it's going to be four. I'm, I'm not okay with just leaving it and letting the, that homeowner be squeezed. It's not okay.
Right, I mean, I, I think what we're, I, I think maybe then the cleaner way to say it would be the board's preference based on whatever we've heard this evening would be for a four foot wide sidewalk on Madison where we're putting in new sidewalks. But that, that is still to, but, but because we have to, it's sort of a relief issue that it, that I think it should, I think it would be right to not cut the homeowners out at this point if, if this is becoming flexible.
Listen, if, if all the homeowners want, if-
It's feet, then let them have-
In fact, it says we're okay with six feet, I don't care.
Right, I mean-
But I, I don't think they are.
I don't think we should state a preference. I think we should have the, 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 our planner, the applicant and the homeowners work it out, work it out. That's, and, and, and we trust that they're-
I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, I just want to review and that if there were any sort of, uh, just looking at my notes from what the other, um, people from the public, any major concerns. I don't think there was, it was really consistently about the sidewalks and the size and the scale, so.
Uh, just a question, I'm sorry. I, just a question, one of the members of the public, um, brought up, uh, sort of being compensated in some way with having the sidewalk and being provided some maintenance in the future to maintain the sidewalk. Is that a, a thing? I've never heard of that before.
So, I, I mean, I'll, I, I, there are people who would be better suited to speak to this, but I'll speak to it only because I have been sitting on this board for many years and, and we do, um, have projects where, um, our, our rule has sort of become that there are some parcels in Highland Park that have never had sidewalks and they, and all of them should have sidewalks. And as, uh, many of us are homeowners that already do have sidewalks and that's part of sort of being a homeowner is you maintain your sidewalk and you deal with the trees and you deal with, um, and the fact that we've maybe spent more years having to replace paths than people who have never had sidewalks than, you know, now they're going to be catching up to the rest of us, but their goal is to put sidewalks everywhere. And, and I think the, um, because it's, um, accommodating the school and as an amenity to the school, the school is putting them in, but in terms of anything in the future, I feel like, you know, now they're, they're sort of in the boat with the rest of us in terms of it's the homeowner's responsibility. I, I think that's a fair assessment. If someone wants to give a more whatever legal practical explanation.
The answer is that you can end up asking for escrows of, uh, or not escrows, you're going to ask and demand that the applicant make sure that his landscaping onsite be maintained, uh, in perpetuity. In order to do that offsite, I think is, becomes much more problematic and therefore, uh, unless there's a voluntary offer, which I'm not hearing from Mr. Clarkin or his client, uh, it may be a great request, but I don't think it's going to have, be forthcoming tonight or tomorrow or any night.
Just, let's move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that sort of arrangement would create all kinds of problems for them because-
We were already sued once.
Yeah, other folks would say, well, now I want you to take care of my sidewalk.
Yeah, I just think, right, it's not, it's not what the borough does.
It's part of owning a house, um, and it, it's just something that goes along with being in a community.
And, and especially a walkable community where we value, you know, giving people that, that place to do that. So, okay, so, um, I do see consensus on, um, moving this forward as described, as described how we just discussed the sidewalks and we'll let Roger maybe shape that into some language, but Roger, before you do that, um, I just also want to do a quick recap. It seemed like there was only a couple other, um, I'll call them outstanding issues that-
They, they include the fact that the, uh, can people hear me, Mike? I got a note-
Yes, we can hear you.
Connection's unstable, okay. Uh, maybe it's, I'm unstable, I'm not sure. It, it indicates that the condition should be the, uh, those comments that were made in, uh, excuse me, Jim's report on the 30th of, uh, November, as well as, um, uh, Alan's report on, uh, the, the first of December, uh, that would include also, uh, the requirement that the, um, excuse me, that there would be, uh, this approval would be subject to the sidewalk dimension, uh, i.e. the width on Madison Avenue, uh, to be determined by way, by way of review, uh, including the, uh, borough, uh, borough planner, the applicant and the, uh, members of the public who are impacted by that, uh, by that sidewalk improvement, uh, as well as, uh, the requirement that the, uh, fence, uh, in front of the building would be reduced from five feet to four feet and that there would be clearly, uh, understood that this is an approval for a school and that other, uh, public services or, or non-school activities are not the subject of any approval, uh, that's being granted by this board tonight.
And I think there was also the addition of, uh, periodic tests from, uh, the LSRP. Is that something that we can-
I, I don't know that that was something that was actually agreed to. I know Alan brought that up, but I think that it's, it's up to the LS, I thought it was up to the LSRP, that's what I thought I heard from Bruce, but I could be wrong. Roger, just one caveat on, you described the, the sidewalks along Madison?
Yes.
But that the last property on Madison at Cleveland is a corner property and so, uh, just-
It's also Cleveland.
Just note that that's Cleveland as well.
Okay.
She has Cleveland frontage as well.
All right. Got it.
Okay, so I think what we should do is, um, instead of making Roger, well, I guess Roger, you can either say that again and someone will make that motion or they can make the motion as per what Roger's last-
There you go.
So moved, I moved to approve.
I second.
That was seconded by, was that Matt?
Yep.
Uh, okay, um, uh, Jen, if you're still there, roll call please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Hammond?
Yes. Did you get Khalidra?
I didn't, I'm sorry. Ms. Hadhazy?
Yes.
I had her app before.
Oh, right, that's right.
We would like to thank you very much for your time and attention and obviously the result. Ma'am Chairman, thank you so much, as well as the entire board, thank you.
Okay, well, we wish you good luck with your project.
Or, or better yet, good morning, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Okay, so, um, again, I'll say this was really too late to keep you all at a meeting, so, um, everyone still looks pretty good though, so we did, that was good. I think there are actually, um, I think that we, um, Jen, we wanted to check out, or for some reason, the last thing on our agenda was the, I've lost my agenda, was the, um, the redevelopment meeting day, or the reorganization meeting date? Is that a thing that we need to, why was that on the agenda? I've lost.
Uh, I just need everybody's consensus that that date works for everyone. So I can notice it.
So why don't you do this? Can we just send, can you just send out an email tomorrow or, or Monday with that, what that date is?
Sure.
And everyone, please just quickly reply whether, um, that works, because it's late to check schedules and get that right, right now anyway, I think. So, okay, so at this moment, I, I'm, I'm sure no one has anything they want to say, but I'll say, does anyone have anything?
No.
Need to say?
Sorry, I'm sorry to be such a stickler about the, uh, width between the homes on, uh, South Seventh Avenue. It's just that there's not been a new house built on that street in over four years, so it's really a big deal to that neighborhood. Um, and I think a lot of people probably aren't even aware that there are going to be two new houses on that street. So I just, it's going to set a precedent for a lot of new construction that may come in the future, so I just hope we get it right.
Well, Khalidra, that's why we're all here and that's why it's great to have people that live in different neighborhoods and have different experiences, because it make, it brings all that home and it makes it, you know, and, and those are things that we care about. And we also, you know, I didn't, I don't know, I doubt anyone from the public is still out there, but the other thing is we, we love feedback from the public because there are, that's the only way we find out about, um, some issues that we otherwise wouldn't know about or what really matters to people, for example, the sidewalks, but things like that come up at many meetings, so, um, that input is invaluable.
I would only add that you, you should never apologize for good idea, for ideas. They should be discussed.
That's right. So with those positive words, we will end our final meeting, uh, of the year, by taking a motion to, uh, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody. Yeah, and have a great, yes.